Happy to help.
All right, well, today is November 30th, 2021 of our City Council Work Session, calling to order. And just a notice for the public, the City Council may vote to go into executive session for any of the agendized items. Roll call, please.
Mayor Deese.
Here.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Ikey.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Keetambeen.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
Councilmember Shimonie.
Here.
Councilmember Sweet.
Here.
All right, well, Councilmember Sweet, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Please stand.
Pledge of Allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands our nation under God indivisible, with a routine justice for all.
Thank you. And Councilmember Shimonie, how about our mission statement?
The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. Thank you.
All right, and Councilmember Salas, would you read our land acknowledgement this evening?
I'm honored to do so, Mr. Mayor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of these areas indigenous nations and original stewards. These lands, still inhabited by native descendants, border mountains sacred to indigenous peoples. We honor them, their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and future generations who will forever know this place as home.
Thank you, Councilmember. We're down to agenda item number four, which is our public participation. I do have a card for Jenna Weldon, who's joining us on teams.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me bring up my PowerPoint real quick. Is it showing?
No, it is not.
Let's try it again. Now is it showing?
Ta-da. Yep, good to go.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, Mayor, Vice Mayor, I'm Jenna Weldon, Beautification Arts and Sciences Project Administrator. I'm coming forward to show you more designs at the last two locations for the Traffic Signal Cabinet Art Wraps 2021. One is at Marketplace and Mallway. The elevation apartments is just behind. Across the street is Harkins Theater and also four bus line transit stops. The artwork went in just before Thanksgiving. The artist, Ms. Quick, wanted to express the resiliency and strength of Flagstaff, especially during this last year and a half, symbolized by the mountain lion while also capturing the beautiful surround and juxtaposing playful patterns. Ms. Quick is a local high school arts teacher, and she does this work on an iPad in a program called Adobe Draw, which she likes because it allows her to focus on her line work and color, which are so instrumental to her creativity. The other installation is not yet up. It will occur at the single cabinet at Fourth Street and Third Avenue in Sunnyside. This location is at a pedestrian signal and has a lot of foot as well as vehicular traffic. Our selection panel reflected a lot of pride in this neighborhood and chose a design and an artist for strong connections. From a distance, the center symbol, which will appear on both the front and the back, resembles a sun or a basket. For the pedestrians who are closer up, the symbol reveals itself to be composed of radial text reading "Sunnyside" with the Spanish words "Pueblo Unido" at the center, or "People United." On either side are the Spanish to the south and "Dine" to the north, meaning "welcome." The spelling error in "Buenavidos" has been corrected. It's just not corrected in this rendition the artist first gave us. The colors are Coconino red, yellow, black, and green, colors traditional and indigenous Latinx and African-American cultures. The strip at the top is a play on Mesoamerican and indigenous motifs, and at the bottom is stylized pines covering the peaks. Mr. Gallegos is active in Sunnyside projects, including work at Radio Sunnyside, youth cinema programs, and elder storytelling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weldon. During general public participation, unfortunately, we can't ask questions, but beautiful artwork, and thank you so much. Do we have anyone else for public participation? General public participation?
No, Mayor, we do not.
All right, thank you. To agenda item number five, review of draft agenda for the December 7th, 2021 City Council meeting. Any questions, concerns, clarifications? All right, not seeing any at this time, aside from Ms. Salzberg.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to let the council know that on item 13E of next week's agenda, this is with regards to the airport parking rates. We will be doing the, if approved by council, we'll do the first read next week, but we are moving the scheduled second read to December 28th. So that's just a slight deviation from what is printed in the agenda, but wanted to make you aware as well as the public. Thank you.
Great, thank you. With that, we are down to agenda item number six, which is our City Manager Excellence Awards.
Mayor and council, we had a comment in the chat that the streaming is not up. If you could just hold for just a second?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor and council, with the live stream down, I think it'd be a good idea to take a recess. It is best to have the live stream going with the audio both and the video being out. I think it would be best to take a recess.
Yeah, thank you. City Attorney, we will take a recess. Let's reconvene 3:20. Give 10 minutes to try to figure it out.
Thank you, Mayor. We will continue to work on it.
Thank you. Yeah, we'll just start right over. All right, no more fun. Back to work. All fun is over. So we are down to, are we all streaming now? Is it working? Functional? All right. Agenda item number six is our City Manager Excellence Award. City Manager.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. A quick audio check here. Is everything all right?
Yep, good to go.
Good to be here virtually. Always interesting to attend one of these meetings remotely just to see how it looks from far away. I'm coming to you from Hotel Santa Fe, and I wish I was there. And I know that our acting city manager could and should be doing this, but thank you, Stacy, for giving me the honor. I take it if you're the acting city manager. I might be the acting city clerk, and I'm going to have some liberties with that. I kind of like the title, yeah. Well, Mayor, Council, and colleagues, this is a fun event for us and something we look forward to with a lot of anticipation. We did this ceremony last year virtually and felt it went quite well, and here we are doing it again. I want to thank everybody, the city staff and their family and friends, present tonight for this virtual City Managers Excellence Award Ceremony. And I might even suggest we'll stay with this format into the future because it works so well. Some opening comments, if I may. All employees of the City of Flagstaff strive to provide excellent customer service in everything, all the programs and services that they do. And they do this service for the Flagstaff community. And while customer service is expected of each and every one of us, there are indeed some employees that year in and year out, they go beyond the city's expectations, and they achieve the extraordinary in service delivery and customer satisfaction. So we're going to share with you some stories and some well-earned awards this afternoon. I do want to congratulate all of the City Managers Excellence Award winners in advance on your hard-earned success in showing how we achieve making the city better by providing service at a higher elevation. Given that we don't conduct these awards regularly once a year, as I mentioned, I wanted to spend a little bit of time on the front end, simply going over the format, if I may. We will share with you the nomination of the individual or group award recipients, and then we will announce the awardees by name, individual names. And we're going to give the awardees the opportunity, if they so desire, to turn on their audio and video. They can do that when they hear their names called. And if they're so inclined to introduce themselves by telling you who they are and the position that they hold, and if they like, they can share a comment or two as well. We don't want to put people on the spot, but we do want to recognize them. So there'll be a lot of that this afternoon. We have three levels of City Manager Excellence Awards. The first level is the Oak Award, and there is an award given for each value of the city to an individual or group, as I mentioned, who stands out when providing one of the city's values. And I'm going to list those values in a second. But as you can see from the graphic here, the three awards, the first is the Oak, the second is the Aspen, which is the next highest level given. And then, as we progress upward, the highest of the City Managers Employee Excellence Awards is given to just one individual. So it's not a group award, it's just one individual. And so that employee who receives that award best exemplifies, if you will, the mission and values of the city to an extraordinary degree. I mentioned the values that are looked upon as these awards are decided. And I will back up and mention, this is a collective effort. It is one that involves myself and the two deputy city managers, Shane Dilly, Shannon Anderson. And we have met several times over the last couple of months, putting together our thoughts and looking at the nominations and so forth. So it's a very detailed and involved process, as it should be. The values that I mentioned, and they're in front of you now, and they have long been embraced by our city organization, and they do, as I mentioned, create the framework for the Managers Excellence Awards each year. They are accountability, communication, quality, leadership, and teamwork. So this afternoon, and I will kick it off, but it's going to be a bit of a tag team here. Good for you that you don't have to hear me the entire time. We will break it up, and so Shannon and Shannon will be assisting. But I am honored, as your city manager, who sometimes acts like a city clerk, to be presenting the 2021 City Managers Excellence Awards. And I will note that we received 24 nominations by the employees' peers. So this is a very organic process coming from within the organization. And out of those 24, we will recognize five individuals and six groups or teams. So you're in for a lot of wonderful recognition here in the time we have ahead. Let's start with the Oak Awards. But I'm going to quickly ask our acting city manager, Stacy Salzberg, if I can deviate from script and tell a very quick story. Would that be appropriate, acting city manager?
Most definitely, Mr. Clifton.
All right, I promise not to be too long-winded. Years ago, many years ago, in fact, in another jurisdiction, we, a very small community, once a year, the sixth-grade students from our local schools got to come into City Hall, and they toured all the departments. And all the department heads and staff laid out their best and tried to, you know, really impress these students with what they did. And as you could imagine, there were treats and candy and so forth. And so, you know, we all kind of geared up for this, and we took great pride in this. And, you know, so they went around from one department to the next. They went to the fire department, they got to see the fire trucks, they went to the city engineer's office, and they got to see pictures of all the wonderful things that were built throughout the community. And they came to the city attorney's office, where at the time I was residing, and they got to learn about things like, you know, city council meetings and, you know, working on contracts and all these great things, right? And one of the things, we showed them the municipal court and talked a little bit about municipal prosecution and so on and so forth. Well, as this little civil lesson goes, you know, the students would go back and they would talk about all their experiences at City Hall, and then they were invited to write letters to all of the departments who they chose to write letters to and share their thoughts about their wonderful tour. And of course, you know, the fire department just gets showered with letters, you know, how big is your tallest ladder in the ladder truck? And do you have a dalmatian that sits in the front seat? All the wonderful questions. City engineer, you know, got bombarded with questions, you know, what's the biggest bridge you built, you know, all the amazing accomplishments in the city. We, in the city attorney's office, received one letter. And I'll never forget how it read, because it was very brief. And the letter went like this, "Dear Mr. Clifton, why do you prosecute people?" And if that wasn't enough, the letter went on to say, "When I grow up, I want to be a city engineer." And there you have it. I'll never forget that. I'll never forget that. But back to the Oak Awards, and this is not about city engineers. We are going to single out part of our legal team here on this first award today. The Accountability Oak Award is going to a group of employees for their ability to complete, not twice the number, but three times the number of American Bar Association recommended caseloads, at three times the caseload they're handling. This team focuses on teamwork, upholding the law and oaths to each other, and Team Flagstaff, and did so, continues to do so, without sacrificing quality. They protect and promote the quality of life, they reduce caseload backlog, they reduce time of case resolution, they promote the diversion and alternates to increase justice and reduce court caseload. In addition, this team promotes specialty courts and other alternatives to reduce recidivism among the unsheltered and those who are abusing substances. They cover the spectrum of the issues and challenges within our community. So I would like to point out and ask that you join me in recognizing this year's Oak Award recipients for accountability, and that would be the city's prosecution team. And we're going to begin with Robert Brown. And I am not able to see the full screen, but if, Robert, if you're able to join us and turn on your camera, and I'm going to go through all the members of the prosecution team, so please feel free to do the same. And if you'd like to share with us a little bit about yourself, we'll just go through in order. But is Robert Brown with us?
Yes, sir. This is Robert Brown, Assistant Flagstaff City Prosecutor. I've worked for the city since 2004, and this month is my 31st service anniversary as a prosecutor, and I appreciate your recognition very much. Thank you.
Well, we very much appreciate your wonderful services. Did I hear you correctly? 31 years?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That is truly amazing. Thank you for your amazing tenure to this organization, and thank you for what you do. And I'm not going to write you any letters, Robert, and ask you about what it is you do in your office. We all know what you do, and we all know just how valuable of a service that is to our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations. Next is Serena Surratio, and same comment here. If Serena is able to join us, we'd love to hear from you, Serena. Is Serena with us?
I believe she may be in court at the moment.
Oh, my. Well, please, we will have an opportunity to pass on our congratulations, but please let her know how much we greatly appreciate her hard work, which is going on as we speak. And then Ron Conwisher, and I hope I'm getting that name correctly, and if I'm not, Ron, please correct me.
Hi, I don't know if my mic is working. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Congratulations to you, sir.
Thank you. I'm a prosecutor. I've been with the city since 2003, and I very much appreciate that you gave us this award.
Well, we very much appreciate your great services. I'll share with you and to the others on the team, we've been hearing for some time about the caseload that your team has been challenged with over the years. We know it's been high for a long, long time, and I know that there's been some efforts to try to get you guys the help that you need. But it goes without saying, you do so much with so little, and we appreciate your hard work. Congratulations to you, Ron. Next, we have Carol Harvey. Is Carol with us?
This is Carol. Can you hear me?
Good afternoon, Carol. I can hear you loud and clear. Congratulations to you.
Thank you. I've been with the city prosecutor's office for about nine years. It'll be 10 years in August, and I'm the office manager there.
Oh, I bet the team keeps you quite busy, and thank you. What you do is no easy feat in nine years of service. Thank you so much, Carol, for everything that you do for the City of Flagstaff.
Thank you, and thank you for the award.
Congratulations to you. We also have Stephanie Golding. Stephanie, by chance, are you with us this afternoon?
Greg, I don't believe that she is with us today.
Okay, I didn't think we would get everybody to show up, but we will, same comment as before, we will make sure that Stephanie is fully recognized in a personal way. And then I will go on to the last member of this wonderful team, Colleen Calhoun. Colleen, are you with us this afternoon? Perhaps not, Stacy?
I see her in our-
I'm sorry, Colleen doesn't have a microphone.
Oh, but do we have her on video?
I don't-
She doesn't have her camera either, but she is participating.
Oh, wonderful. Well, Colleen, you can hear us. So we are so grateful for your service, and you are part of an amazing team that has been doing amazing things. Thank you and congratulations. So there you have it, Robert, Ron, Serena, Carol, Stephanie, and Colleen. Congratulations to you, our amazing prosecution team.
Mayor and-
Okay, no more stories on my end. I promised you we'd do a little tag team here, so I think I'm going to hand the baton over to Shane. Shane, are you ready?
Actually, if I might, I don't know quite how to refer to you, city manager or city clerk, whichever one, acting city clerk.
Is this the city attorney whose voice I am hearing?
It is. I apologize for that. I did want to, I wanted to thank you for the incredible recognition of the prosecution section. There are two employees who, as you mentioned, we are always very grateful for all the work that they do in the prosecution section with the heavy caseload, and we've heard a lot about that over the years and the help that they need. We have a new prosecutor, Sasha Charles, who was not with the city at the time the nominations were made, as well as a new administrative specialist, Karen Capps, and we appreciate their work as well. That's why they were not part of this, but thank you to them as well.
Thank you, Sterling. Very gracious of you to make sure we get all the names recognized. So thank you for that. Sterling, you know this, but I'm going to tell you what you already know. You have an amazing team in the legal part of the city, the legal division, an amazing team. But the prosecution team, they operate a little bit behind the scenes. We don't always get to see those folks, but we know how hard they work. And so this is just very well deserved. We're all very excited.
Agreed on all accounts. Thank you.
Thank you, city attorney. I'm passing it on to Deputy City Manager Shane Dilly. Shane, are you ready?
I am, sir. Thank you. Members of the council, it's an honor to be able to present to you and the public the Oak Award for Communications. We are recognizing a group this year in this category. This group of employees developed new procedures and partnered with a new nonprofit, Access H2O, to give customers additional opportunities for assistance that are not income-based. They updated the city's website with this new information. They created monthly delinquent notices. And they created a brochure for payment assistance to the public, very helpful during our COVID period. They made over 6,000 outgoing phone calls to our customers. They sent reminder postcards, making every effort to be available to our customers, our general public, to help them in their time of need. They left notices at properties, hand-delivered notices. All of these efforts resulted in collection of over 4,400 payments to the city. The team created a communication blitz to provide useful tools and information to help customers pay off past due balances, to make sure they knew what their options were as customers to the City of Flagstaff. With the help of several utility assistance programs, identified customers received almost $70,000 in assistance over this period of time. This team was able to collect $2.8 million from delinquent accounts from their dedicated efforts or through their dedicated efforts. We're pleased to provide this Oak Award for Communication to the following. Sharon Gonzalez, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Oh, wonderful.
Thank you for the recognition. I really appreciate it. We work very hard.
And Sharon, you are the Building Collections Manager.
Oh, yes, I am.
Thank you for your leadership and all your help this past year.
Thank you. It's been rewarding.
Thank you, Sharon. Is Jenny Lynn with us?
I see her with us.
I'm here.
Hi, Jenny, how are you doing?
Good.
Good. Thanks for being with us. Congratulations, and thank you for all your work, all your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Hewlett. Oh, we got the team?
Hi, we're here. I have myself and several members of my team here upstairs. So thank you for this award.
Thank you, Jessica. Do you want to tell us who you have with you? Thank you, Jessica. Do you want to tell us who you have with you?
Sure. All right. So in front of me, we have Nancy Thomas. We have Rhiannon Thomas back here.
Do you guys want to say your own names?
Hi, I'm Celeste Coop. Krista.
You've got the whole group with you.
Hi, I'm Danielle Tiedemann. I'm the Customer Service Supervisor.
Hi, Danielle.
Hi, I'm Cameron. I get mistaken as a man. I work with lovely lady.
We do have Cameron and Cody here as a moral support. They joined the team recently and have been helping with the efforts. And then I'm not sure if Will Dean's visible on camera.
We have a couple of folks from Meter Services.
We have some Meter Services team as well.
Great. I'll go through these slides and, and as your name is read, if you could just say hi and just know that we really appreciate all your, all your hard work and your example and the service that you're providing to the community. So Danielle, you raised your hand already. Thank you. Nancy Thomas. Hi, Nancy. Celeste. There you are. Thank you, Celeste. Krista.
Hi, thank you.
Hi, Krista. Thank you.
How are you?
Rhiannon.
Hi, that's me. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Rhiannon. It's a wonderful picture we've got up on the screen of you.
Thank you.
Will Dean was off to the side. Is she in the room?
Yes, I'm in the room. Just keeping my distance.
Thank you, Will Dean. Manny? Is Manny Sierra with us?
He should be on the meeting. I'm not sure.
I'm out in the field right now.
There you are.
For the recognition.
Thank you, Manny. Still, still hard at work.
Proud to be a part of the team, hard workers and wonderful people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Manny. Be safe out there.
Thank you.
Is Scott Klotz with us?
Yes, I am. Also out in the field. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Really appreciate you, Scott. Thank you. And with that, Mayor and Council, that concludes the recognition for the Communication Oak Award. Round of applause for these recipients. Thank you, everybody. I'll turn the time back over to Greg, our acting city clerk.
Thank you, Shane. This next Oak Award for Quality goes to a team of employees who conquered the largest workload that we've seen since 2008. They adapted to a new environment. I'm going to turn my camera on here. I apologize. There we go. Adapted to a new environment and their new, and their workload never suffered. Construction work continued to remain strong and even when members of the team were diagnosed with COVID and the others were there to, to help pick up the slack and carry on with the additional workload, covering each other throughout the pandemic. They did that to ensure nothing ever slowed down and quality never suffered. Many often complimented the work this team performed. We have heard accolades throughout the community. And it's so well deserved. So this year's Quality Oak Award recipient is, ta-da, the engineering inspectors. What a wonderful team. And we're going to try to recognize all of them here. We're going to start with Jeff Roan. Jeff, are you in the room?
Yes, I am here.
Hey, Jeff. Congratulations to you and the many others on your team. You have an amazing team.
Thank you. I appreciate the award and thank you so much. I'm a construction inspector for seven, going on seven years now. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Oh, that's wonderful. You really have, you know, the comments at the front end were, were very genuinely stated. You guys never lost a beat throughout this whole pandemic. You are out there working on the front line and you did so admirably and kept up with a very busy workload.
Correct. We never stopped.
Never stopped. Thank you for your amazing service.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jeff. Moving on, then we have Ben Jones. Ben, are you with us?
Hey, I'm here.
Hey, Ben. Good to have you. How are you?
I'm well. Thank you.
We just had a nice introduction from Jeff Roan. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
My name is Benjamin Jones. I'm a engineering inspector. I've been here for, I think, going on six years now. So yeah, just working hard and trying to stay at it.
Which you are. Thanks for being with us this afternoon, Ben, and congratulations to you on a very well-deserved honor here. So much appreciated.
Thank you kindly. I appreciate, I appreciate this. This is, this is big. Thank you.
It is big. It's very cool. Is your colleague Jackson Salazar with us?
He is. He's here with me now.
Hey, Jackson. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon.
Good to have you. Tell us a little bit about yourself.
I've been a construction inspector with the city for about two and a half years. Just been learning a ton and it's great to get some, some recognition.
Yeah, and it's great to give you the recognition you deserve, you and your teammates. Well done, Jackson. Well done. We have one more I want to call out. Patrick Jenkins. Is Patrick with us?
Patrick's out hunting today, so I don't think he's going to be on here.
That's all right. There are a few excuses that we would be okay with. Out hunting is one of them. So he gets a pass. I hope he's having a successful hunt. And then when he comes back, he can learn about this great prestigious award here at the city of Flagstaff. So let's provide a nice round of applause for Jeff, Ben, Jackson, and Patrick who's out hunting. Way to go, team. All right. Hey, Shannon, it's time to hear from you.
Good. Sounds good. Thanks, Greg. So this next Oak Award is for leadership and it goes to an employee who is consistently reliable in helping others complete their routes. His actions demonstrate both personal and team accountability. He's committed to his team and the customers that he serves here in the city of Flagstaff. One specific call out for this employee occurred this last summer on July 14th. As you know, this summer, we experienced some pretty significant monsoons and as a result, had some pretty severe flooding through certain areas of town. This employee certainly demonstrated real leadership when he saved the life of a fellow citizen. This citizen wasn't able to get themselves to higher ground out of the pathway of floodwaters. So this employee actually went into that area and successfully pulled them out before the water hit in order for that individual to get to safety. Please congratulate the 2021 Leadership Oak Award recipient, Kevin Anderson. Kevin, if you are with us today, we'd love to be able to see you and hear a little bit about your role here at the city and anything else you'd like to share with us. Hi, Kevin. We can see you. Can you hear us okay? I think that you might still be on mute.
And it's not me, I promise. Somewhere, I think it's probably Stacy Salzberg who's got him muted.
Actually, it looks like it might have just come off. Kevin, can you try your sound again? Still not coming through. I'm not sure if we know how to impact Kevin's sound. But ladies and gentlemen, counsel, Kevin Anderson is one of our employees who is in solid waste. He is one of our operator threes and certainly well-respected by his team members. So Kevin, thank you for being here today. I apologize that we couldn't-
Hello?
Ha ha, we can hear you now. Yay.
I reached a tiny area. I touched a different button. Oh, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin.
To help them out of their harm's way at the time.
Hey, Kevin. Greg Clifton here. You're a hero, my friend. Thank you so much for your efforts. And what a great story and thanks for doing what you did.
I would do it for anybody, yeah.
We know you would. Congratulations on this well-deserved award.
Thank you very much.
So if we can, we'll pause here for a moment to provide applause for Kevin.
All right. I think it's back to me. How did I end up getting so much airtime here? Obviously, I wasn't paying attention. I will pick up this next one, which is the Teamwork Oak Award. So this one goes out for teamwork and not surprisingly, we're going to recognize a team. A group of employees on this team who have transitioned water services from an analog system to a digital SCADA system. SCADA, S-C-A-D-A, stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. It's a control system architecture and lots of computers are involved with big screens. And it's amazing to watch these folks at work. It can be a struggle to inspire employees to initiate technological improvements in the water industry. But this team communicated a vision that helped operations staff feel comfortable in the technical world. They are bringing separate operating systems into one automated monitoring system. They have effectively developed, coached, and led employees' success in using this new technology. This team fosters a culture that supports a positive focus and demonstrates the tenacity in the pursuit of organization and team objectives. So I'm quite honored, actually, to present this Oak Award for Teamwork to our SCADA team. And we're going to start out here with Tim Harrington. Hey, Tim, are you with us this afternoon?
Yeah, I am here.
How are you, Tim? And congratulations.
I'm doing great. Yeah, thank you.
We pulled you away from your big computer screens, I'm sure, to have a little bit of FaceTime with you. And we want to thank you for your hard work. Tell us a little bit about what you do and this thing they call SCADA.
So we like to refer to SCADA as sassy computers always demanding attention. Yeah, so you know, we're, we're, we're working towards kind of automating the whole system, moving to kind of the digital revolution, as they refer to it as. It's a busy job where I was kind of at hand working and it's, I have a great team that, that it's kind of leading the way in front of me, if you will. And I'm, I'm kind of honored to work with them.
Yeah, and I bet they would say the same thing about working with you. Tim, well done. Congratulations on this. We're going to call up some other members of your amazing team here and see if they're in the room and if they could join us. Corinne Smith, good afternoon. Are you with us?
Hey, Greg. Yes, I'm with you guys.
Hey, how are you?
Pretty good, thanks.
How is life with these sassy computers?
I'm pretty awesome and entertaining. I actually do more of the information systems part on paper. I am the IS Administrator for Water Services, but I do wear many several hats. I do the GIS, our CMMS, and our IIOT devices. And I greatly appreciate all the kind words.
We greatly appreciate all your wonderful service. It is a wonderful team that you're a part of. So thank you and congratulations to you.
Thanks again.
Yeah, and I was just accompanied by a 60-pound English sheepdog who's lapping water. So if you're catching some background noise, it's for good reason. Lauren Cargill.
I think Lauren and Rod were not able to join us this evening.
Could you, since we have you there, Tim, could you give a little impromptu introduction of both of them?
Sure, no problem. So Lauren, he kind of, our, our team kind of blended from two other teams. Lauren came from the water side and Rod kind of came from both the water and wastewater side. But Rod, Lauren's a very good kind of hunter down of issues with, with the systems when something goes wrong. And then Rod, of course, is kind of a genius programmer that's helping us move into that, that new era of digitizing our system. We're lucky to have the city of Flagstaff.
We are lucky, Tim, to have you and your, your team. And thank you for introducing the two who could not join us. Let's, let's give a great round of applause to the SCADA team. All right. I think it stays with me. We're on to the next level, which is the Aspen Awards. By the way, you're seeing a picture of these awards. They are so cool. Shannon, this is a new award format this year and how they look. I want to thank you for putting these together. We're looking at the Oak Award. Do you have, I guess we'll do the Aspen Award after we honor everybody, just like we're looking at the Oak Award now?
Yes, you've got it, Greg.
All right. We'll get on then. But I do want to take the opportunity to thank you for putting these awards together. The Aspen Award for Accountability goes to a single employee for the tremendous effort to transition the library to Office 365. The, in addition, this employee took, and we're going to have, have this employee speak a little bit about that transition. This employee took the lead role in helping the library update its Collection Integrated Library System, ILS, that is, which was the culmination of months of preparation, planning, configuring, and testing. His coworkers say he deserves this recognition because these systems are used by every department of the library, both city and county, and by the public at large. Upgrading the ILS is about as big of a project that the library will ever experience. So again, we have something happening behind the scenes that is very much benefiting the community in so many ways. This year, this employee, pardon me, is being recognized this year for, for the Aspen Award of Accountability. And that goes to Mike Brem. And Mike, if you're with us, we'd love to hear from you and see you.
Can you see me now and can you hear me?
I can hear you. And I can see you. Ta-da.
Excellent. Making sure the camera is on. I am a library IT analyst. I've been in this position for 28 years now going on. So it's been quite a challenge, but it's been fun the whole way through. And 2020 and 2021 have been long years for the IT department. So I'd like to shout out to my fellow IT guys at the library, David, Michael, Mark. Thank you, guys. We wouldn't have gotten all this done if it wasn't for a lot of your help. But transitioning to a new library system is a very big project. And we were able to get it done with lots of planning, but the overall changeover just took about a month and we got most of the bugs worked out, I think. And we're still going.
Oh, that's excellent. So you're not dealing with sassy computers on your end. Things are pretty straightforward.
Well, they can get that way.
You know, it's a great story that you're sharing with us. The things you've accomplished here in this transition is rather remarkable. And what, what makes it even more so is that you did this during times of being short-staffed and, and reduced hours of operation. And that's, that's not within the library, but it's certainly- and reduced hours of operation. And that's not within the library, but it certainly is with respect to the community usage of the library. So this was a big project kind of happening behind the scenes when resources were already a bit constrained.
Yes, that's very true. When COVID shut the entire city down, we pivoted really quick to move and put a lot of digital resources online that were now integrated into our catalog, which really expands the amount of materials that the community can download and read and watch movies and a lot of stuff like that. And it is a lot of behind the scenes work, but I'm glad it's working out for the community.
Mike, thank you so much for what you've done and thank you for your amazing tenure with the city. And I don't know if you can see the computer screen, but in just a second here, we're going to give you a big round of applause. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Three, two, one, let's do this. Yay.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mike. Shane, back to you.
Thank you, Greg. It's now my pleasure to recognize a group of employees chosen for this Aspen Award in Communications in support of the communications value for our organization. They worked many months, dedicating much of which their own time to find a solution to the new pay plan for the fire department, a very complicated task. The work, again, performed was extremely complicated and involved sorting through volumes and volumes of data. It was also very collaborative as it had to involve the solution representing 90-plus members of the workforce that they were representing. The team was excellent in not only soliciting and listening to feedback from that workforce, but they provided excellent reports back to the group through a series of several internal and external meetings above what was established by our Human Resources Division, which also did a lot of outreach to this workforce group. Please join me in recognizing four Aspen awardees for this communication award. We'll start with Todd George. Todd, are you with us? Nice picture, Todd. Do we know if Todd is able to be with us today?
I don't believe I see him in our list here.
I do not see him in here, Shane.
Thank you, Mark. Todd serves as our fire captain. We will, as one of our fire captains, we'll move on to Kyle.
We're on here. Hey, Mr. Dill. Hey, sorry. We were having technical errors. Todd George is here. In fact, we were all laughing because he was going to have to be the first one to talk, but I guess I'm up. So, yeah, you are. We're all together here and we just want to say thank you for the award. And there was a lot of hard work put in by a lot of people with city leadership and our leadership and our peers. So we're honored and we're, thank you very much.
HR Jessica Fuze, retired Jean Gallagher.
Jean Gallagher.
Yes.
So Kyle, are all four of you there?
Yeah.
Yep.
So we've got Todd George, we've got Kyle Denham, Seth Gregor, and Casey Gonzalez. Can you all get in the camera so we can see you? There, I see Casey. There we go. Collectively, how many years are represented in this, on this screen?
66.
Well, you whipped that number out pretty quick.
We were talking about it earlier.
Oh, that's a lot of years of experience. And I think that's what it took to help bring everybody to a solution that is now being implemented. So thank you very, very much for your personal investment of time and dedication to an outcome that I think is going to serve the fire department in many, many years to come. So thank you very, very much, you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
So with that, we can join in recognizing this amazing effort. Thank you, team. Greg, I think I turn it back to you.
Thank you, Shane, and thank you for that. I'm going to move things along. This has been great. You know, we've been honoring people from all different divisions and disciplines. You know, water and library and solid waste. We're going to shift gears and then just now fire. We're going to shift gears here and talk about our pre-treatment program and our wastewater component of water services, which is another one of those components of the organization that is so critically important and they operate largely behind the scenes, but what they do is profoundly important. The Aspen Award for Quality goes to an employee who is being nominated by her coworkers and her amazing work in taking the pre-treatment program to new heights. This employee developed the city's first ever fats, oil, and grease manual. We affectionately refer to that as FOG, F-O-G. Developed new standards in the areas of industry inspections to submit data and review by industry. Revamped procedures to be service-oriented and customer-friendly. Hired a contractor to regularly pump out all restaurant grease interceptors, very important. Streamlined the water services webpage and prepared informational handouts. I have had the opportunity to work with this individual in a couple of capacities. And she is truly amazing. She's been in front of council recently and I hope that she's back here with us now. Jolene, are you with us? Hey.
Yes, I actually just got back in town ten minutes ago.
I have to ask, where did you get back in town from?
I, my husband and I spent a few days in Rocky Point for a little mini-vacation.
How cool is that? And how cool is this to be back in town for just a few minutes and now be joining us at the city council meeting for the City Managers Awards of Excellence?
It is very cool. I very much appreciate being nominated and picked for this award.
Yeah, well, you deserve it, Jolene. I hope you had a wonderful time in Rocky Point, by the way. But we so much appreciate everything you've been doing for the city. You're busy on so many fronts. And we know, like many, it's a small team over there, but what they do is amazing.
Yes, it is. I have a great team that helps out with everything.
Yeah, you do. Well, congratulations to you. You are the recipient of the Aspen Award for Quality. And we're also very happy for you.
Thank you, Greg.
Yep, let's give Jolene a big round of applause. Okay, hey Shannon, we're back to you, Shannon. Are you ready?
Yep, sounds good, Greg. Thanks. So this next Aspen Award is for leadership. It goes to an employee for his commitment to details, follow-through, and the work on several high-profile cases that can take years in preparing for their day in court. His caseload in 2020 alone included four homicides, two shooting scenes, a bomb threat to our police department, and domestic violence stalking case. In 2021, he actually began working on two more homicide cases, an attempted homicide, a child abuse case, and an aggravated harassment case. In addition, this employee maintains over 150 felony domestic violence cases every year. In most of these cases, he not only conducts the initial suspect interview, but also sits in on all of the defense interviews as they prepare for trial. This employee also has lingering cases from previous years that require his attention. He must maintain a detailed recollection of the investigation and is held to an extremely high standard of accountability for every aspect of the investigation. Please join me in congratulating this year's Leadership Aspen Award recipient, Todd Martinet. Todd, are you with us this afternoon?
I am. Thank you, Shannon.
Ah, great to hear from you. If you want to tell the council and those joining us today a little bit about yourself, that'd be terrific.
Sure. I am a detective with the Flagstaff Police Department. I've been with the PD for 17 years next week. Ten and a half of those have been as detective and I appreciate the nomination from my lieutenant and the award from the City Manager's Office. Thank you.
Well, congratulations, Todd. Very well-deserved award. It's very clear that your peers, as well as your supervisor, have great respect for the work that you do on behalf of our community. If you will, all please join me in a round of applause for Todd.
Yay.
Thank you, Todd.
Well done, Todd. Hey Shannon, I'm going to go off script one more time. I'm not going to tell any story about civics classes, but I'm wondering if you would be able to handle the next award as well?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that, Greg. All right, so our next award is the Aspen Award and it's for teamwork. This recognizes a group of employees who rose to the challenge of serving 895 households. This is amazing under the ever-changing set of COVID rules that were required by the federal government. This team established new standard operating procedures that adapted to this new environment. There are some of which required council action. So as we know, that's a more involved process. Some required creativity in dealing with the need to enter homes to address maintenance issues to ensure not only the employees remain safe, but those who are in the home were as well. And then lastly, others were external-facing and involved the implementation of a new online application portal for the public to use in accessing these services. All of this occurred during a year when this team experienced a 48% increase in housing applications over the previous year. The team being recognized for the Teamwork Aspen Award this year is Section 8 from Housing. We will start by recognizing Tracy French. Tracy, are you with us today?
We're all here. The Housing Authority is now being recognized and shares 155 years of service for the City of Flagstaff and is inclusive of maintenance and public housing, known as Section 8. We talk as a group and they are happy to wave as they come on the screen, but don't wish to individually speak. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sarah, for the nomination and recognizing the great work of this team. So Tracy, if you want to wave so that way council knows who you are. Hi, great to see you. And then we'll go on to Sharice. Hi, Sharice. And then we'll go on to Caleb. Hi, Caleb. And Dionne? Hi. And Jane? Thank you. High five, Jade. And Patricia? And Amanda?
Hi, this is Amanda. I've been with the Housing Authority 13 years. It'll be 14 coming up in December. And I am over at Clark Homes. Thank you so much for the nomination.
Thank you, Amanda, for your great work. Ray? Hi. Keith? Hi. Izzy? Great to see you, Izzy. Troy? Hi, Troy. Jose? Right front and center. Woo-hoo, Jose. And Harold? Great to see you. If you will join me in please recognizing the great work of this team.
Thank you, Shannon. Thanks for going off script there a little bit. We are looking at the prestigious Aspen Award and I have to say, these are just very cool awards. I love them. Thank you so much for this. And yeah, it's a beautiful-looking plaque there. Are we ready to go on to the Ponderosa Award? We are at the finality of this. It has been such a fun thing to be a part of. And it's going to culminate here with the Ponderosa Award. The city employee receiving the Ponderosa Award for Leadership has worked diligently and tirelessly for decades. I think, if I recall, 31 years. I hope I'm getting that right. His attention to detail, hard work, and intelligence makes the city attorney's office a better place. Despite the ability to work from, pardon me, despite the ability to work from him, this employee shows up every day, oh, to work from home. There's a typo there, Shannon. I caught that. To work from home, this employee shows up every day just in case one of the judges needs an attorney. He is great at putting out fires before they even start. He goes above and beyond to research every detail of a criminal defendant and recalls their name, their history, and details of their case when called upon by the judge. He constantly volunteers to provide coverage for others to take time off or attend training. In that sense, he is truly a team player and he leads by example. We have talked a lot about the great work of our prosecution team and we had many of them introduce themselves earlier. We're going to ask that Robert Brown come back and once again, share his video and his microphone with us. Robert, I hope you're there and you're getting a little bit of some double time today. And I hope you don't mind us singling you out on two occasions. One, as a member of an amazing team, but now as the recipient of the highest award for leadership in the City Managers Excellence category. And gosh, well done, Robert. Are you with us?
Yes, sir, I'm here. I confess I wasn't expecting this at all, so.
Well, it's so well deserved. And again, you know, we've shared a lot of comments about people working behind the scenes and the amazing things that they do. And I had some fun with an earlier story talking about city prosecution. But I have to say, as I read the narrative here, for you to put the personal touch in these cases that you do, knowing people by name, knowing their history, knowing the details of their case, basically bringing the human element into your profession, like it's just amazing what you do. And I think it is so deserved and it goes such a long ways in showing the professionalism of you in your office and how you conduct yourself in the courtroom, representing the city. But more importantly, Robert, being a representative of our judicial branch of government. So thank you for all that you do. We'd love to hear any additional thoughts or comments that you might want to share.
Thank you, Mr. Clifton, mayor and council, and those watching online. Thank you very much. I, again, I had no idea that this is always even up for consideration for this award. So I very much appreciate your recognition. As I said, it's been a little over 31 years now as a public prosecutor from Mojave County to Cochise County, Navajo County, and now here since 2004. So I've certainly done my best to try to represent the city and its citizens as honorable as man as possible. And again, I thank you very sincerely for considering me and awarding me this honor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Well, thank you. Before I conclude here, I'd love, we're going to want to hear from our mayor and council if they'd like to offer some closing comments. But before you exit this screen here, Robert, I'm just assuming that the voice of Sterling Solomon is out there somewhere wanting to be heard. Sterling, can you unmute yourself and share your comments?
Your assumption is absolutely correct. I appreciate that city manager. Speaking of assumptions, Robert Brown is absolutely the most non-assuming attorney I have ever worked with. Little short story of my own, as I came out of law school and started my first job as a prosecutor in Navajo County, I was trained by Robert Brown as a prosecutor. Robert has been around for a very long time. He is absolutely an amazing asset and true to form, as it stated, he's covering as the acting city prosecutor right now as Brent Harris is away. So thank you Robert, I really appreciate it. You couldn't have deserved this award anymore. Well earned.
Thank you Sterling.
Yeah, nice words Sterling. Robert, before you leave, we're going to give you a big round of applause. Here we go. Yeah. Very well done, very well done. Robert will receive this plaque that you're now seeing. Once again, a very cool plaque. Shannon, thank you for helping to come up with these. I love the artwork. You're going to receive this Robert and the name tag to honor your accomplishments. And we're all actually honored to be here with you, recognizing you for the hard work now spanning 31 years of dedication. So thank you for that. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, I'm going to turn it back to you to share any closing comments as we end this ceremony.
Thank you city manager. You know, this is such a great tribute to so many individuals who serve our community and you know, it really highlights what we know, which is what we have an amazing team here at the City of Flagstaff filled with dedicated individuals here to serve our community. And we really are truly honored as elected leaders to know that we have so many people with such dedicated service, years of service and even those with shorter time spans knowing that they're here to really do such great work. And well, you know, we always have the saying of standing on the shoulders of giants. Well, that's what our staff is at the City of Flagstaff. Those who we rely on to do the heavy lifting. And I really appreciate that the city managers awards really highlights these individuals who, like Robert Brown, who have such selflessly helped our community and continue to do so and deserve every accolade associated with it. So thank you all for your service. And with that, I can open up to our other members of council. Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you mayor. I might just say from time to time, I ask questions of the city manager, the assistant city manager, the city clerk. And you know, as she knows, I've been asking questions this week. And every time I ask questions, they have answers. And it's like, oh yeah, we're working on that already. So I just want to, you know, say thank you to all of Team Flagstaff, not just the people that we're, that we referenced tonight. We just have a great team here and I'm really proud to be part of this organization. Thank you.
Thank you Councilmember McCarthy. Vice Mayor.
I just want to echo everything that has been said earlier. Thank you so much. You all are what makes the city function and your service to the community can't be overstated. So thank you so much.
Thank you Vice Mayor. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you mayor. I just wanted to offer a huge congratulations to everyone that received an award tonight. But more importantly, to all of Team Flagstaff. Our city relies on you and boy, do you come through with an A-plus effort. And I am very proud to be part of Team Flagstaff and tonight was inspiring. Thank you.
Thank you Councilmember Sweet. Councilmember Shemoni.
Thank you mayor. Congratulations to all the award winners. I'm very proud of your efforts and am humbled to be part of this team with you all. I know some of you and the more I get to know this great group of individuals who works for the city, the more I just respect and appreciate all the hard work that goes into the operations of what we do. And as was mentioned, we can't do those operations without each and every one of you. So thank you. Keep up the good work and know that we appreciate you. Thank you mayor.
Thank you Councilmember Shemoni. Alright, Councilmember Salas.
Thank you Mr. Mayor. I just want to articulate what I have written in the chat. Congratulations and much gratitude to all award recipients and the entire Team Flagstaff. You remarkably exemplify service at a higher elevation. We make the city first, we make the city better and Team Flagstaff. And with that, I am giving everyone grateful hearts. Thank you.
Thank you Councilmember Salas. Alright, with that, we are down to agenda item number seven. This is our economic development year in review. Economic vitality. Take us away.
Good evening mayor, vice mayor and council. David McIntyre, your community investment director.
If you could, sorry, if you could put the mic towards your direction, appreciate it.
No, that would make a lot more sense. Thank you very much for the guidance. It's always great to have a little bit of guidance, so. Good evening mayor, vice mayor and council. David McIntyre, your community investment director. I have to start by congratulating all my colleagues who just won awards. What a fantastic team and we are so honored to be a part of the Team Flagstaff. You saw just a wonderful group and it's honored to be colleagues with them. So thank you very much. We are here to do our economic development 2021 year in review. As some of you may recall, pre-COVID, we would come on the fifth Tuesday, every fifth Tuesday to talk about the business community, to provide updates from various sectors or partners. And we are beginning that tradition again here on this fifth Tuesday with a quick recap of some of the year in review for economic development and then the hope to bring some of those sectors and the tours that go with them back in the time to come. So the economic development program is who you're going to be hearing from today. And that is different from some of the other economic development efforts in the community. So I know you know that, but for the public who are watching, we are distinct from our wonderful partners at Discover Flagstaff as they focus more on tourism and visitation and we focus more on the primary sector jobs. What are primary sector jobs? Again, for those who are watching, they're the jobs that bring wealth into the community, usually through manufacturing, through digital products, through healthcare services. They usually come with benefits, intellectual capacity and slightly higher wages. So that's the focus of our particular group. We do work a lot with retail and other businesses because that also helps maintain a vibrant economy and reduce leakage. Now what is leakage? Leakage is when you can't find a product in this community and so you go to another community to purchase it or online is a new form of leakage over the last couple of decades. So one of the things that we try to do is make sure that there is a robust enough and vibrant enough retail sector that you're going to want to stay here. You're going to want to buy locally. You're going to be able to find what you need here and therefore those jobs and those sales taxes stay in our community. So generally what the economic development program does is seeks to grow a diverse and very stable economic base and jobs consistent with the regional plan and with our community values. We have a small but mighty team of 2.5 full-time equivalents. John Salt and Stall here in a whimsical picture showing some of his amazing nature is our business retention and expansion manager. You're going to be hearing from all of our folks as we go. Jack Fitchett, our business attraction manager. Craig Zanetto, who unfortunately was going to be presenting with us, but due to some symptoms, he is staying home and we're just taking an abundance of caution. And then myself, Craig and I both serve the community investment section and therefore we are .25 for economic development. How, you might ask, could we possibly do what we do with 2.5 people? Well, I will tell you. It is because we have amazing partners in the community. A big portion of the resources that we have through the Economic Development Fund, which is funded by the BBB, exclusively by the BBB, go to our partners such as Moonshot, who operates our incubator and our accelerator. You'll hear a little bit more about them in just a few minutes. Econa, the Economic Collaborative Northern Arizona, Coquenino County and their Workforce Development Board and a number of other partners, both within the city and regionally, who really do a lot of the work that if we had a larger section, we would be more focused on. But the way that we choose to do it and the way council has chosen to do in the past is through those partnerships. We do have a chance to celebrate this year and I wanted to take that opportunity. As you may know, UA JC Whitehall is a company that has recently come to Flagstaff. It's the largest company to land in Flagstaff since the 70s and Econa, our partner, and Jack Fitchett with Business Attraction, won an award from the Arizona Association of Economic Developers for the best deal of the year. So we're very excited about that and it really is an amazing partner. Gail Jackson was our business attraction manager and now runs Econa. Jack Fitchett is our new business attraction manager and the two of them together were an unstoppable team. It was great to watch. Additionally, Econa, congratulations to them for winning the Business Retention and Expansion Teams Entrepreneurial Brochure. John Salt and Stall is a part of that particular group and was able to participate. And I'd just like to announce that Jack Fitchett just graduated with his Arizona Association of Economic Development Pro Certification. So he has graduated into one higher level of sophistication. You'll get to speak with him in a little bit, but we congratulate him very much on that achievement. With that, I'm actually going to bring Jack up to talk a little bit about business attraction and some of the programs he's been doing in the last year. Thanks very much for the opportunity. Well, thank you for the very kind words Dave and good evening mayor and council. Like Dave mentioned, I'm Jack Fitchett, your business attraction manager. And tonight I'm going to talk to you about a few different things, but first I'd like to start off with our recent business attraction incentives. As some of you may recall, we brought three new programs to you all back in July of 2020. These were three novel incentive programs designed to further help business attraction efforts in our community. But keeping with our constant improvement mindset, we actually did a look around and a review of those incentives about a year later and came up with a few revisions to bring back to you all in May of this year, which you also graciously approved. And I have to say that those revisions have gone quite a long way in boosting the effectiveness and usability of all of those incentives, but specifically one in particular. Going to the job creation incentive, again, you may recall that Catalyst Space Technologies was our first awarded business. They actually moved into Naset when they came to Flagstaff and they were awarded $15,000 that helped assist them in relocation expenses and bringing their team to Flagstaff and actually adding several new members to that team. Moving to the sustainable automotive sales tax rebate, this is actually the incentive that saw the greatest increase in use this year. We've had over 15 applications to date. About $7,000 of our $20,000 pool has been used so far. But in speaking with recent dealership owners, we actually expect an additional 24 applications to come in from pre-orders that are all going to be electric vehicles. So assuming that does happen, which is great news, we actually may be in front of you again, council, requesting some additional budget dollars to refill that pot of money to continue to provide that incentive for those that are looking to buy a sustainable automotive vehicle. Additionally, for our year in review from a business attraction success standpoint, the city had issued over 400 new business licenses this year. A quick qualifier there, I want to make sure that you guys understand that just because a business license was issued does not necessarily mean that is a new business. Could have been a change in ownership, could have been several different things, but confident to say after reviewing that data that we've had over 250 new businesses ranging from mom and pop stores that have opened within their homes, adjusting to COVID-19, all the way up to Whitehall, which we'll talk about here in a moment. Which getting into next is the largest new business in the last 50 years, UACJ Whitehall Automotive Industries. Like Dave had mentioned, we've won some awards for their attraction to Flagstaff and they actually plan on creating 300 new jobs for our community and plan to have about a $65 million capital investment in Flagstaff. And then just a brief note on business attraction and how it's really a two-pronged, you know, double-edged sword or a two-pronged attack. Sometimes you have the case where Whitehall Industries and things happen at light speed. Seems like one day you're talking, doing your initial request to gather more information for that company, then all of a sudden you're here and that's awesome because it happens very quick. You can see the results immediately. But the second prong of business attraction is more of this long-term game where you're planting the seed with many businesses and company leaders to think about Flagstaff when they get ready to expand, when they get ready to make that next move. And for example, here Firehouse Subs is a perfect example of that. Our former business attraction manager, like Dave mentioned, Gail Jackson was actually the reason Firehouse Subs is here today and that was an effort that started over five years ago. So quite a lengthy bit of time, but nonetheless a success at the end of the day as well. And then lastly, as I conclude here, I'd like to talk about our new analytics software known as Placer AI. Placer AI is replacing what some of you may have known as Buxton. Buxton is our consumer information technology analytics. It does a lot of tracking of data iPhones. We get to see where people are spending their time, all of that good stuff. So what you'll see here on the left-hand side is a map. It's a geo-fenced area that we actually created of our north downtown sector. And then on the right side, you'll actually see how many visits have occurred in the past 11 months or really this calendar year. So the north side of downtown has seen about 2.91 million visits. Some other information there that may be interesting is the average dwell time is just over two hours. Visit frequency would mean that same phone, how many times does that come here over that span of the years, ranging between about 2.6 to 3. So very interesting, very powerful software, kind of scary that our phones can track all of that, but you know, this is the day and age we live in. And we've just recently acquired this, like I said, we've had it for about six weeks. So we're still learning a lot of the interesting tools and capabilities of this software. But something that I'm able to show you today is actually, again, this visits, this is again in downtown Flagstaff. And I want you to pay attention to that left-hand side where that's the number of visits in hundreds of thousands per month. Now obviously in April 2020, you can see when COVID affected our community, we went into lockdown as did most of the globe. You can see a huge drop off in the number of visits per month. However, as we start to recover, you'll see here that all the way up until about last month, October 2021, we were actually doing better than we were prior to the pandemic. So it's a huge success story just with the information that we've been able to digest thus far. So all that being said, I would actually would now be introducing Craig Zanetto, who is supposed to be presenting with us today, but unfortunately is feeling a bit under the weather. So I'm going to read some lovely notes that he prepared for me, so please bear with me, but this is in relation to the brownfield efforts. The brownfield efforts for the city have been around for decades, as you may recall. And for the benefit of the public, the brownfields program is from the EPA and supports repurposing properties for a more robust business climate as well as ensuring hazardous materials are identified and addressed for the safety of our citizens. There are still funds available for use with the average return for investment on a property is 18 to 1. For the latest round of funding, the ED team is a member of the Northern Arizona Property and Business Revitalization Program led by the Northern Arizona Council of Governments. While the program has provided projects throughout the region from Page to the Verde Valley, we have nominated three properties to date within the city limits. We have been able to have environmental assessments done on the Phoenix Avenue Warehouse property, now known as the Downtown Connection Center, and two more properties are pending approval. And then lastly, Craig, we'll also be telling you a little bit about Moonshot at Naset. And so our partners from Moonshot at Naset have been working hard over the past year and have overcome some of the challenges that came during the pandemic due in part to their marketing and outreach and also in the economic recovery, the occupancy rate has risen by 20%. We are excited to have businesses such as PWR Labs, Development Engineering Services, Armored Outdoor and many others, including Catalyst, as I mentioned earlier. And also as a side note, Moonshot has had a very successful pitch event recently. Thank you to Councilmember Salas for attending and for the staff that helped out with that event. We are anticipating an increase to the occupancy rate and some of the existing tenants are poised for expansion. But John Salt and Stall will touch on that in just a moment. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I'm John Saltynstall, the Business Retention and Expansion Manager. It's great to be here, awesome to see all of you, it's been a while. I'm going to talk a little bit about our marketing efforts. The highlights of this include that we've been able to negotiate a 60% discount on all of our annual marketing for this year so far. It's resulted in almost 2 million impressions, which is a very strong number for us. It goes to some of that long game that Jack was speaking about regarding the attraction efforts and, for that matter, any other expansion efforts as well. These outlets include Innovation and Technology Today, Business View Magazine, and Business Facilities Magazine, among others, Flagstaff Businesses as well. The BRNE incentive, just want to touch on that. This slide is a brief overview of the most recent round of applications, showing the totals of all the applications as we received them. And this shows that of all the eight applications we received, the total amount requested was Their proposed match amount totaling $761,000 with total number of jobs retained or created between 41 and 54 positions, with an annual wage of $45,000. The sectors that applied for the incentive include manufacturing, biomedical engineering, mechanical engineering, space technologies, material solutions, concierge food service. And every awarded dollar, incidentally, would have been matched with at least three and a half private dollars. The awardees for this round include Catalyst Space Technologies. I think we've all been impressed with what this company is doing in our community and for the planet and for space, for that matter. They'll be using the award to hire over 21 people in the next couple of years with an annual wage of $55,000. They're going to be providing direct community benefit relating to workforce development through their relationships with NAU's College of Engineering, bringing interns into their business, by supporting STEM development and by supporting area robotics programs and events. Dark Sky Brewing is the other awardee for this particular incentive. They'll be hiring between 10 and 20 people with an annual wage of $30,000 each. They'll be using the funds to expand and enhance an outdoor patio that will also enhance the downtown area. They're going to be providing some direct community benefits relating to workforce development through their relationships with NAU's Hotel and Restaurant Management College and with CCC, bringing interns into their business. They also assist a lot of community organizations with fundraising and hosting volunteer-based organizations. In addition to their expansion, may also contribute three new parking spaces in the downtown area, which is a good thing and a value of approximately $45,000. Also want to talk briefly about the Innovate Waste Challenge. This is something that was, that came into being a few years ago when our Community Investment Director attended an Economic Development Conference, and he learned about some ways that we might be able to spur on entrepreneurialism while also advancing some of our sustainability goals. The idea is to invite people to take a look at the waste stream, to convert, I'm sorry, to divert and convert material from the landfill, creating either a new product or service. Over the last couple of years, we've awarded Praxis, a plastic recycling company, BeWell Organic Hand Sanitizer, and then, let's see, the hand sanitizer piece was one of our pandemic pivots, as we started to include protective, personal protective gear and equipment in that challenge. This year, we're partnering again with Sustainability to deliver the carbon dioxide removal, which allows, or rather invites, people to take a look at creative ways to remove carbon dioxide from the atmosphere. The winner may be awarded up to $30,000. There have been a lot of expansions. It's been a really tough time, and yet there have been a lot of great stories to report. So we're not going to talk about all of them, we're just going to touch on a few of them right here. Joy Cone Company is very interested in expanding. They're hoping to add another 70,000 square feet under roof to their operations here in Flagstaff. Translational Genomics Research Institute, affectionately known as TGenNorth, is now occupying the complete remainder of the building where they've been for a number of years here in Flagstaff, which is a great expansion. Also want to just touch on the Adaptive Reuse Program. Again, this provides up to $5,000 for businesses that meet the qualifications, and that would allow them to use that money for any development or review fees. So far, Laura Chamberlain, professional chef, Lemonade Cafe, and Dark Sky Brewing have been approved for the Adaptive Reuse Program. And finally, some workforce development efforts. As the Vice Chair for the Arizona At Work Coconino County Workforce Development Board, I'm really excited about some of these highlights. First, we're going to start with Elevate Pre-K. This organization is, they recognize the importance of quality, early childhood care, and early childhood services as it relates to the child, but also as it relates to the ability of parents and caregivers to get back to work. Elevate Pre-K has established one pilot classroom, delivering a model of quality, early childhood care for children between three and five years old. Virtual Reality Career Exploration, the Workforce Development Board is contracted with a company to provide virtual reality headsets. We're able to take them anywhere in the region and use those for career exploration or for job trainings as well. We have the Pipe Trades Apprenticeship Program up here. This is a great project right now. It includes business retention, expansion, workforce development, and business attraction as we're trying to bring this facility here where they'll be able to train people all along the region, and we also thank Councilmember Salas for making some of those introductions. And finally, we have a new Executive Director for the local workforce area known as the Arizona At Work Coconino County Workforce Development System. Mr. Billy Francis brings great enthusiasm and experience from Louisiana to Coconino County to enhance and advance our workforce efforts throughout the region. That's, that's all that we have. We're a small team, we're honored to be a part of Team Flagstaff, and it's a great privilege for us to serve the community, and we're just happy to be here. So with that, we take any questions.
Thank you, John. I'm Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Saltynstall. When I did your job...
Yeah, how am I doing?
Nah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
One of the, one of the main obstacles that employers express to me, as well as on the attraction side, when trying to, to talk to employers about coming to Flagstaff, was the cost of housing. Are you still hearing that?
We still hear that, absolutely. You know, it's a dialogue that I don't think is going to go away anytime soon. We've got, as you all know, one of the groups awarded. Their entire job is to work on the affordability issue, and they do partner with not just economic development, but others all throughout the community to try and positively impact that situation. But the answer is yes, we still hear about that.
And I know that the housing section has the Employer Assisted Down Payment Assistance Program, and it, last time I talked to them about it, it sounded like not very many employers were, were participating in it, and I'm wondering whether you all bring housing in to the mix to talk about that program and just, you know, all housing programs?
It's definitely an opportunity that we need to build upon, absolutely. Bringing them into the mix and making sure that we have all that material, anytime we're meeting a business, whether they're here already or they're looking to be here, we need to be able to share that information, absolutely.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimonie.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, John, Jack, and Dave. Great update and very excited to learn about all the hard work you all have been doing. Couple comments, I also just wanted to take a second to second Vice Mayor's comments about housing and collaboration with that team. Let us know if you need help in setting those meetings and conversations up, but I have a feeling you can handle it. Sarah doesn't bite, just kidding. But, yeah, it depends, right? Anyways, a couple comments. You mentioned the carbon dioxide removal and the funds for that in partnership with sustainability. Love it, really like that direction. I also wanted to add to the mix, maybe we can also do prevention funding versus just dioxide removal?
I think that we, the way that we have it set up, it's fairly flexible. If it's going to deal with removal, we're going to listen to that business idea. If someone has an idea that is about prevention, I'm very certain we'd be happy to listen to that and encourage that as well.
Excellent, because there's just so much we can do to prevent it before we have to then remove it that I think we can invest in and get, think creatively about, so thank you. And then, in regards to workforce development, I know you've done a lot of work to try to build a larger coalition or support network to connect businesses and agencies to apprentices, apprentices, apprenticeship, and individuals who want to engage in that type of a relationship. Can you give a quick update to that?
Speaking to like the internship network, you know, just recently I had a chance to meet with our, the Chair of the Workforce Development Board and group from NAU and from the Career Development Office, Chrissy Spear, I think it was Erica Jones and John Genter. Anyway, we had a great opportunity to discuss how we can really bring these groups together, make sure that they're at the table for workforce development, really identifying as many career pathways as possible, and also utilizing our partners at CCC and making sure that we've got connectivity from cradle to career. You know, that's something that Launch Flagstaff had spearheaded, and even though there's been some transition in that organization, all of those efforts are still active. We are very interested in enhancing all of those points along that career pathway, absolutely.
Okay, maybe that's something I'll dive in a little deeper with you in this upcoming year. And then lastly, is there anything we can do in the front of attracting more youth activities? And I know we've talked a little bit about this through emails, about youth opportunities for pastime things, fun, I guess, but is there anything else we can, that our little team can think of in regards to like what else we can do to incentivize those types of efforts?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the question, Councilmember Shimonie. I think that there are a few things that we can certainly do to boost the attraction efforts for what you would call a typical attraction. You know, funny enough, I was looking at Scottsdale the other day, and it saw that they just got something that is essentially the, essentially Topgolf, but it's for pickleball. So it's like a restaurant with multiple floors of pickleball, which I have a feeling would do quite well here. So it's about finding those companies that are doing those creative attraction things and making sure that they are aware of the wonderful community that we have and getting their, getting them up here to see it. So as more of those companies do come on, online, and that need arises, I think that that void will start to help fill itself a little bit. And then additionally, we also have Bull Ski, which is a new bowling alley that'll be opening out at the mall here soon. I believe, hopefully before the end of the year, that may have changed slightly, but another attraction is well on the way. But I appreciate your question. I think there's definitely more we can, we can do, it's just a matter of finding those folks and businesses that can actually supply what our community wants as well.
That's great, thank you, Jack. And lastly, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Salas for your engagement and advocacy and leadership in all the things that you've been involved with. I know it goes a long way, and I appreciate you engaging that way. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you, Mayor. Your team is small but awfully mighty, so I do appreciate all of your work. I guess my question is, as we know, I have a business downtown, and we talk a lot about how we're having a hard time attracting employees. We have it at the city, Joy Cone mentioned it on our tour. Do you have any maybe tricks up your sleeve that you can share on what you're doing to attract and keep and retain staff for these wonderful companies in our city?
Thanks for the question. You know, workforce development, it's key to everybody. I can just say that right now, as I think with one of the last bullet points I had, we have a new Executive Director, and I'm hopeful that we're going to be able to really dig into a lot of these workforce issues. It's certainly been a greater challenge over the last couple of years. So that's to say, at this moment, I don't have any, any special trick up my sleeve on that. We continue to work to build those relationships, make sure that the skills are being delivered and created. In the paper today, CCC was talking about their new assisted living facility certificate, which is a great, it's a great program. The more that we can be doing those types of things, the better, and hopefully, you know, again, I hate to just stand up here and say hopefully, but the fact is, we have to have some hope about it, but we also have to be willing to do the work. And we are, and we've got a new director, we have staff in place at the city and out in the region to do that.
I do appreciate all of your hard work with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Hanson has a comment on that as well.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Heidi Hansen, Econophytiology Director. I apologize, I can't be with you tonight, I have family members that are ill, and I think that you want me to stay away. So at any rate, I just first want to thank my staff for doing such tremendous job presenting to you this evening. And as far as some ideas for recruiting, I wanted to let you know some things that I'm working on that my staff doesn't even know about yet. I've been reaching out to the publisher at the Arizona Daily Sun and the owner of the Flagstaff Business News to create a way for our businesses to advertise that they have availability in their businesses at a better rate. And by doing that, Discover Flagstaff and Choose Flagstaff would help sponsor those pages so that it makes it cheaper for our businesses to advertise in there. And there's going to be more to come on that and more that I'll be sharing with City Manager Clifton as well before we roll this out. On another note, some things that you might not know that you could do, we have a destination video, we have actually several videos that the Discover Flagstaff team puts together each year, and if you're recruiting from out of the area, you are welcome to those. We want you to use those videos to share with people that we might not be able to give them the most affordable housing right now, as Vice Mayor Daggett just mentioned, but we can actually show them that the environment that they live in has a lot of amazing assets and is a place that they want to come versus maybe another location. So those are some of the things that we have in our toolkit that you can use at any time, just reach out to us. And more to come on the now hiring ideas that I'm working with our media agencies. Again, it will be brought back to you, it's just it's not, it's not finalized. I have a meeting next week with Troy Bricks again at Flagstaff Business News, and the following week with Colleen Brady at the Arizona Daily Sun. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. Any other, Councilmember Shimonie?
Really quick, thank you. Can you go back to the slide that talks about Business Attraction Incentives towards the top, slide number five? And as you're pulling that up, an idea that just, you know, came into my mind from a previous conversation we had at the DIAZ was in regards to the electric vehicle incentive and potentially expanding that to electric bicycles, EV bikes. And my question is, can you remind me what we put into the fund initially?
Councilmember, I'm just going to grab this one because I was just meeting with Nicole about this recently, so even though it's an attraction incentive, I hope you don't mind me just jumping up. It was originally 20,000. We have spent approximately 7,000, but it is generally understood that with the EV orders that are pending, and a big part of that is you all heard about the supply chain, so we're waiting for those orders to come in. We could use the entire fund with what we know is potentially coming. We also know there's a couple more applications out there that might come in quicker. So it was approximately 20,000, and it could be gone, but there's still about 13 left technically.
Okay, and so I guess my question is, if we wanted to create a fund for electric EV bicycles, is that something we would do during our budget retreats, would you think? Or what are your thoughts?
So yeah, Councilmember, this, the conversation I was having with Nicole very recently, as you can probably imagine, was talking about how we can try to meet that particular need. You know, these are BBB Economic Development Funds, so we try to tie them to business development within the community, and we talked about, could it be something where electric bikes are, they have to be sold here, you couldn't buy them online, they'd have to come in, and... have to come in. And there was some, some room for that conversation, I believe. Sustainability, we're, we're working with sustainability as we always do during budget season to figure out where we can support each other's programs. I should say, not just during budget season. There's special meetings about this during budget season, but all year, we work with our sustainability partners to figure out how we can help mutually achieve each other's goals and the council's goals overall. And so we are talking about what potential budget asks might be appropriate ways for us to continue to advance the Climate Action Plan while supporting the economy here in Flagstaff. My understanding is that sustainability may put in a specific program with their funding for e-bikes and allow us to continue to replenish ours for electric cars. So you should see both programs come forward. Those, those aren't final details. I hope Nicole's not feeling frustrated that I just mentioned it, but those conversations are happening. We're trying to figure out who's most appropriate to pay for it, where those monies come from. They'll be a part of the budget conversation in the year to come.
That sounds good. And Nicole's behind you, nodding her head, so.
Yeah, she's, she's making sure you're saying things right.
Yeah, she's always right there. She's always right there.
Just like Sterling.
Right, yes. But yes, we are, we're actually actively working to figure out where, how to best work with the dollars that we have and the specific requirements of the funding sources to try to achieve those needs and both support the economy and also achieve those climate goals, which we can do together.
Thank you, Dave. And just in closing, I'll just say that, you know, electric bikes are a lot cheaper than electric cars. And so we might not need as much money and it'll go a lot further. And we have a council budget, fund balance that we have access to as a council. So in your discussions moving ahead, don't, don't forget that we have access to a small amount of money in our council budget to play with. So this might be a good area to, to tap into that potentially. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. And actually, you covered what I was actually going to ask, which was on this slide, but I'll, I'll save it for budget sessions when we're looking at the expansion of these types of programs that are, I'd feel a really great direction for our city. So looking forward to that. And thank you for all your hard work.
Thanks very much. We really appreciate the opportunity to present.
Okay. All right. Well, we've been at it for a little over two hours now, so it might be time for a little, I see you jumping up there, Jenny. So a 15-minute break or 16-minute, let's make that so 5:20, we will restart. So, thank you. All right, are we're good to go? Acting City Manager?
Yes, Mayor, we are.
I'm going to say that as many times as I can before I can't say it anymore. All right, sounds good. Well, we're down to agenda item number eight, which is Advancing Resilience in Flagstaff: A Framework for Action.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jenny Neiman, Climate Program Manager. I am really excited tonight to introduce our partners in the Climate Science and Solutions Program at NAU. This is a really exciting sort of collaboration between the city and our climate program and the Climate Science and Solutions Adaptation Class for the Fall. We work quite a lot with NAU programs, particularly this program, but this gave us a chance to really dig in, to really work hand in hand with this class as, as they really dug into resilience in Flagstaff, into the changing climate and, and what we're going to see. But they really went above and beyond to start talking about recommendations, to start talking about tools, to really think about engaging the community, much due to your feedback when we last spoke in September, as well as feedback they got from other commissions and talking with the community. So I am really thrilled tonight to present Pilar and Jaylen, who are really representing their colleagues, some of which who are here tonight. So just a really big thank you to the two of you, as well as to all of your cohort for some really outstanding work that I'm really excited will contribute to sort of our work and our resources as we move forward as a city. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Jenny mentioned, my name is Jay Garies, and I am a first-year student in the Masters of Climate Science and Solutions Program at NAU. And I, along with my classmate Pilar, will be speaking on behalf of our class, presenting our semester project, which is the Flagstaff Adaptation and Resilience Resource Document. And thank you, everyone, for having us this evening. So as a refresher from our conversation in September, I just wanted to go over some of our project goals for the semester. The first being working with the city council, as we did in September, as well as the different city commissions in the community, to figure out what is most important that they would like to see in this resource document. The second goal that we wanted to achieve this semester was to consolidate already existing climate adaptation documents that the city has provided to create a community-friendly and comprehensive resource document. And then finally, we wanted to establish a toolkit which increases the community's climate change resilience as a whole. So I also wanted to go over a brief timeline of the semester project. The first aspect was actually writing the document utilizing existing climate documents by the city combined with existing climate research. Secondly, we met, as I mentioned, with commissions, city council, and the community to tailor the document to community needs and values. Third, we researched, or we, using the research compiled in the document, we have created a toolkit in the form of action items for each sector most impacted by climate change in Flagstaff. The fourth part of the project was producing a video series summarizing the main points covered in each content section. And then finally, we are presenting our project for further action and review. And now, Pilar will go into some of the more details of the project, as well as introduce some of the content of the document itself.
Thank you, Jay. So as Jay mentioned, as part of this project, we thought it would be beneficial to involve council and various commissions. So with the goal of obtaining feedback, the framework of the project was presented in September to the city council, Sustainability Commission, the Diversity Awareness Commission, and the Inclusion and Adaptive Living Commission. With the Inclusion and Adaptive Living Commission, there was a strong emphasis on ensuring that those with disabilities are not disproportionately burdened by climate actions. One specific example that came up referenced a disabled community member whose access to their home was impeded by the placement of concrete barriers, which were initially placed with the intent of protecting the home from flooding. Throughout all of these meetings, we were encouraged to engage with the public and students at NAU. And so with this, we decided to do some public outreach, which included a survey and a public forum. Both the survey and the public forum were promoted at the NAU Open Air Market, the Flagstaff Farmers Market, and the Urban Flea Market. We also used flyers and emails to spread the word about these. So with the public forum, all attendees expressed concern of fires and floods and then population growth, as well as vulnerable communities. In the public forum, improving education and strengthening communities was proposed as a way to improve resilience in Flagstaff. With the survey, nearly all participants also expressed high concern of fires and floods, as well as water scarcity and increased costs in living. And then, the survey found that of the Flagstaff projects and programs in place to help address climate change impacts, participants were least familiar with the Resilient Neighborhoods Network. So in tackling this project, we kind of decide to, decided to use a three-pronged approach. So in short, our document serves as a resource document in adapting to climate change and increasing resilience. It also comes with a list of action items and solutions which can be practiced by communities and individuals. And then finally, each section in the document is accompanied by a three to five-minute video. These videos were made by their respective content groups with the intent of basically just being a little more comprehensive. Not everyone is going to want to read a 60-page document, so these videos will be available so that people can easily just get a quick and brief overview of the key takeaways and points in each section. Getting into our document structure, it begins with an introduction which acknowledges Flagstaff's location, its land, and its people. It then gets into some important definitions that should be known before diving further into the document. It also touches on some physical and climate science as it relates to Flagstaff and just impacts that Flagstaff is already experiencing from climate change, such as rising temperatures and aridity and shifting precipitation patterns. The introduction also gives recognition to justice and equity within Flagstaff and gives an overview of the project methodology and content breakdown, emphasizing that this document does not elaborate on mitigation strategies, but adaptation strategies, and is a working resilience resource document. Following our introduction, we have our five content groups, which are Public Health, Infrastructure and Housing, Natural Environment, and Water Supply and Resources, and Tourism and Recreation. These topics were chosen for each section to align with the sectors that Flagstaff used in their vulnerability assessment, which are listed here. And then each of the content section includes components of an introduction or a background into that topic, some societal impacts, economic impacts brought by climate change, and then solutions in the form, or solutions and action items in the form of a toolkit. The introduction also gives credit to resources used in this document. So throughout the document, we've incorporated information from four of Flagstaff's already existing documents, which are also listed here. And then we have also used some outside resources, which are, which include but are not limited to the latest IPCC report and some scientific journal articles. So getting into our first content section, we have Public Health. This section of the document emphasizes areas in which Flagstaff needs to focus on or prepare for, such as increasing capacity to address mental health issues. We're seeing more and more climate anxiety, not enough time being spent outdoors by people, and then financial stress is also taking a toll on mental health. We have healthcare and emergency response systems, so we're seeing an increasing demand for workers and systems following extreme events such as fires and floods, also an increase in heat-induced illnesses and respiratory issues, as well as diseases that come with extreme events, such as West Nile or Valley Fever. And then climate migration to Flagstaff, so people moving in from the valley in search of cooler temperatures. The Public Health section also focuses on disproportionate impacts on vulnerable communities, so exposure to poor air quality and extreme events. Neighborhoods in low-lying regions or areas are more prone to floods, and homes pushed up against forests. In the event of a fire, are basically breathing that smoke in their backyard, not to mention the danger from the fire itself. And then cost and access to healthcare and expense of increased need for cooling. Not a lot of homes in Flagstaff were built with cooling systems, but as temperatures continue to rise, we're seeing more and more people installing cooling systems into their homes. The Public Health Toolkit includes a neighborhood help map. Something like the Next Door app could be used to create something like a neighborhood help map. The toolkit also suggests planting trees to reduce exposure to heat-related illnesses and creating emergency plans and preparedness kits. Our second content section is Infrastructure and Housing. So this content gets into some transportation infrastructures, such as roads and bridges. Climbing temperatures are likely going to damage roads and bridges, as well as extreme events like fires and floods, which will eventually lead to increased costs in maintenance. This section also goes into energy infrastructure, so hotter temperatures and other extreme events lead to an increasing demand in temperature, I'm, I'm sorry, in energy, which drags up energy costs and disproportionately affects lower-income residents. And then there's the potential for utility lines and cell towers to be damaged by high winds, fallen trees, and other conditions brought by extreme events, which cuts off communication and access to emergency responders. And then the occurrence of an extreme event, those will already likely be in high demand. And then lastly, this section goes into housing infrastructure and cost of living. So homes located in fire and flood-prone areas are at higher risk, not to mention that many of these areas are inhabited by marginalized communities. And then population increase is leading to an increase in housing costs and associated gentrification. The infrastructure and housing toolkit suggests improving roads with more permeable material to, that has a better chance of withstanding events such as heavy precipitation, and utilizing retrofitting incentive programs to help increase energy efficiency. So this could look like installing low-flow toilets, insulation, or home solar window tinting. I will hand it back to Jay now to finish the rest of the content sections and the slides with you.
All right. Thank you, Pilar. Hello again, everybody. So I will be diving into our third content section, which is in, for Flagstaff's Natural Environment. We identified the most pressing concerns for Flagstaff's forests as being more intense wildfires, post-fire monsoon flooding, biodiversity loss, and bark beetle outbreaks. And we chose these to discuss because we truly think that policy and community actions can make a difference in creating resilient ecosystems. Some of the toolkit solutions that we've offered in this part of the document include increasing local biodiversity in the form of neighborhood native plant gardens. This can be seen in the downtown Heritage Square Butterfly Garden. We think that's a great example for the community to take home and use in either their, their own home gardens or their neighborhood gardens. Also, increasing outreach for the already existing zero-scaping demonstrations that the city's been putting on. We also think this is a great resource as well. The second part of the toolkit is establishing more community campaigns to, for wildfire resilient neighborhoods. This could be in the form of self-assessments for actual neighborhoods, as well as wildfire checklists for homes and buildings. Also, planting hardwoods instead of the more flammable pine species. Finally, in this toolkit is establishing rain gardens, rain barrels, and rain cisterns to maximize water use efficiency, which we'll get into our next content section, which is Flagstaff's Water Supply and Resources. So the main vulnerability we see in Flagstaff is the fact that we're going to be in a moderate drought. This is because of a reduction in snowfall, which impacts our, the lack of groundwater recharge, which is the main source of drinking water for the city. So this, we see this as disproportionately affecting vulnerable communities, such as the unhoused communities, as well as the immunocompromised. So some of the toolkit solutions we're offering in this section involve just water conservation by all residents and businesses to reduce strain on current water supply and infrastructure, just making a more resilient community. This could be in the form of participation in the Waterwise Business Certification Program, the, some more home water conservation techniques, like Pilar mentioned, low-flow toilets, slow-flow showerheads, things like that. And then utilizing more drought-tolerant plants instead of more water-intensive plants to reduce lawn watering demand. And that brings us to our last content section, which is our Tourism and Recreation Sector in Flagstaff. We see the most pressing impacts from climate change being, in the winter, being reduction in snowfall, and in the summer, being shifts in recreation patterns due to shifts in climatic events and more extreme climatic events. So in the winter, we could see some potential decreases in visitation due to lack of natural snowfall. And in the summer, the shifts in recreation patterns, they involve, we might see some decreases in heat waves or surrounding wildfires, but in general, there might be a net vast increase because of the amount of people visiting from, you know, other areas that have more brutal summers, like Las Vegas, or Phoenix, or Tucson. And this can be, this can cause a strain on the local economy, as well as existing infrastructure, such as roads and lodging. Some of the toolkit action items that we're proposing in this section involve economic and recreational diversification, kind of like covered in the last part of the council meeting, really bringing in more indoor activities that aren't so reliant on perfect climatic conditions. We also are suggesting increasing capitalization on the STEM community aspect of Flagstaff. It's a great aspect of Flagstaff, and really bring in, bring in more family-friendly environments, events, things like that. And then finally, continuing to support local business to, and community-based organizations to secure that local economy, residents and visitors alike. All right. And now we're going to go ahead and show you the introductory video of our series. This is a pretty short video, and we chose this because it's a great representation of the tone and themes throughout the, the series, as well as it kind of gives a brief overview of the series and the project itself.
As the impacts from global warming and climate change can be experienced around the globe, there comes community concern for public safety and well-being. With extreme weather events like floods and droughts, there comes millions of dollars of destruction. And as the intensity and frequency of these events increase, there comes to be an apparent impact on our lives and leaves us wondering who will be affected next.
The effects of climate change can be seen in the city of Flagstaff. In some winter seasons, the town receives little snowfall, which impacts freshwater cycles. However, in contrast, other winter seasons have received record snowfall, which resulted in subsequent demand for snow removal. Many wet winters are followed by strikingly dry springs and early summers characterized by drought. This sets up our local forest to be vulnerable to wildfires, which was the case for the early summer of 2021, when many members of our community suffered from the thick layer of smoke and ash of the Raphael Fire.
All of these challenges directly impact the city of Flagstaff's infrastructure, environment, community health, and economy. And as students attending NAU for the Climate Science and Solutions Program, we have created a working resilience resource document, a community toolbox, and a video series, which addresses adaptation strategies to address climate change.
Our approach includes providing resources and information for current climate conditions, engaging the community and local government to generate dialogue concerning climate impacts, and providing tools that local residents can utilize in order to build individual and neighborhood resiliency.
We invite you to stay tuned and join us for the rest of our video series on forest fire and ecosystem, water supply and resources, housing infrastructure, tourism, recreation, and public safety. Thank you.
And that brings us to the end of our presentation. I wanted to thank you all again for having us this evening. I wanted to give a special thank you to Jenny for being a great resource for ideas, instruction, feedback, all of it. She's been great. And I wanted to re-mention that this is a living resource, and that this can be continually edited with more policy and community engagement and innovation. And then finally, we do plan to have this at the, on the city website at the end of the week, following a rigorous peer review process that we've been going through for the last few weeks as a class. And we also have, also plan to have the video series accompanying that on the city website as well. And again, thank you all for having us, and now we'll open it up for questions and feedback.
Thank you. This is awesome. I mean, why didn't we have these type of classes when I was in grad school? It just made us do calculus all the time. No, this is just so cool to have an actual toolkit, a means of action, as well as, you know, if you, I mean, I was impressed with the presentation in September, but you can see in just a couple months how you just took this to the, a completely new level, and that you took the input in from ourselves, from our commissions, and I will say, feedback from our commissioners was so positive and excited about the work that you all are doing that I just, I'm very impressed. But I want to open it up to the other council members here, and yeah, this is just really great work.
Thank you so much.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that great presentation, and thank you all for all the work that you put into this. I'm wondering if in, throughout the course of creating this, whether you learned anything that surprised you.
I think I can speak on behalf of me, Plar, and the rest of the project managers, that compiling a project with a group of 30 grad students was, was definitely an exciting experience for all of us, learning how to construct the different content sections, how to divvy up the work. That was a great thing that we learned as a class and as a group. And then learning how involved the city is with already-existing climate research, climate, specifically climate adaptation research. There's already been a lot done, and that was really great to see.
I guess I would just say it was also difficult to work on a document with 30-something students being in our class. Obviously, not everyone is going to have this look exactly how they want it to look, but we were able to collaborate. And I think the way that we structured setting up this document and dividing into content groups allowed everyone to have a pretty equal say in it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hassan.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you all for being here. Thanks for taking time out of your Tuesday evening to hang out with us. Long past when we thought this might be scheduled for. That's pretty typical around here. You know, I'm not going to pepper you guys with questions. I was a grad student once. I know, I know how the, the routine goes after a presentation. You guys kind of get drilled. I, I think this is amazing stuff. You definitely know what you're doing. I'm really encouraged by the, the model that we're all demonstrating here of the, the city partnering with the local university to leverage all this incredible student resource that we have, and to, to create a really neat partnership and do great things. And in fact, I do want to let you know that during your presentation, I've been texting with President Cruz, who was on the, the live stream and watching the entire thing, and, and he says, "Proud of them." So he was, he was able to check in and, and check that out, and it's just a really nice indication of the, the relationship we're slipping into as a city and as a university. And you guys are exemplifying the possibilities, so thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, President Cruz.
Councilmember Schmuni.
I'll jump in. Well done, Jane Laura and, and team. And John, thank you for, for your leadership in, in helping this class along, and thank you all for being here tonight. Great work. This is a great resource guide. I love that it's a living document, and that we can build upon this in the years to come. Couple comments, let's see. I just, I just also want to echo that I strongly appreciate the partnership with NAU and, and students, and I, and I really hope we can continue to build upon this relationship for many, many years to come. Like Councilmember Hassan, you all are such a huge resource for the community at large, and, and you all put together a really nice resource for us. But I also want to build upon it, this relationship in the sense of, how can we have NAU and NAU students and faculty really lead the charge and be the example of, of the change that we're looking to, to see in our culture and, and our community? You all have a lot of good energy and great ideas, and, and I think, you know, as you get older, you get kind of firm in, in your ways and in your opinions and your approaches, and, and students still have an open mind. And so I think that when we talk about culture shift, you all are going to be the most receptive to that shift and, and embodying that change off the get-go. So I'd like to see how we can build upon this. John, that's kind of a comment to you moving forward. And, and thank you to Jenny and Nicole from our team for your time and leadership in working with, with this group. I know that it, it takes a lot of work, and, and I think that that work paid off here tonight. President Cruz, thank you for tuning in. Let's build upon these efforts moving forward, and, and very excited about what has been done here today, leading up to this. That's all I got. When the videos are live, Jenny maybe can send us a link to those via email. I'd love to just see those directly. I, I think those are great, and, and well done. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to add, but great job, and I look forward to seeing where this goes. And I, I really encourage you to make sure it's in all facets of our community, and thank you for all of your work on it.
Thank you so much.
Councilwoman McCarthy.
Well, thank you. I think it's wonderful that young people are kind of taking the lead of where we need to go in the future. I do have a couple thoughts that I might mention. There's an elephant in the room that nobody wants to talk about when it comes to climate change, and that is overpopulation. In my lifetime, the population, I'm one guy, I'm old, I admit. In my lifetime, the population of Arizona has gone up more than 10 to 1. The world population, in my lifetime, one person, is more than tripled. That is the major driver to climate change, and it seems that no one wants to talk about that. Back in the 70s, I read some books about zero-population growth. So for zero-population growth, each woman would have 2.08 children. In other words, two, but some people are going to have a few more, obviously, to have zero-population growth. All right, that's my first point. As far as the document itself, I read the whole thing, so I, it was worth reading, and I enjoyed reading it. My one criticism, well, I gave, I gave you some detailed nitpicky stuff that I'm not going to waste time on here, just to help you edit it a little better. But a, a general comment I'd like to make, it seems as to result a lot of repeats. I'd be reading a paragraph, and it's like, wait a minute, I just read the same thing two pages before. And, you know, Mark Twain once said that I wrote a long letter because I didn't have time to write a short letter. The idea is that writing a good document, sometimes shorter is better, and that's harder. And I also, when I was in grad school, my master's degree is in Master of Environmental Planning, Land Use Planning. And we did a lot of projects, but we tended to have like four or five at the most students. This is actually a very learning experience to be able to work with this many students and, and get it done effectively, and have everyone carry their own weight. But I think the, the side part of that is that we have this thing where there's so much repetition. And I would say if you went back and, and did it, edit, someone edited it, they would try to, you don't want the reader to say, wow, I just read about this two pages before. So I, I noticed that quite a few times that you talked about air conditioning and how Flagstaff may get air conditioning. Well, what's the alternative for that? Okay, I'm a mechanical engineer. I got an A in heat transfer. What does that mean? That means when I built my house here in Flagstaff, I insulated the hell out of it, which only cost me a few hundred dollars extra. My house in the summer has literally never been hot. I've been in that house 18 years. It's never been hot. I go into my neighbor's house, and their house is 80 degrees. So what do they do? They add an air conditioner, which uses amazing amount of energy. So if people could insulate their houses well during initial construction at a minor increase in cost, significantly less than the one-time cost of an air conditioner, they would not be using energy in the summer to cool their house. So that's just one example. So overall, very positive, and I made some criticisms, but please take those in the tone of constructive criticism. Overall, I think it's a very valuable document. I think that all of the students learned a lot, and hopefully you guys put that to good use after you get out of grad school. So thank you, and keep up the good work.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Well, I would actually, the, the one critique I had actually Councilmember McCarthy touched on, which is regarding overpopulation, that's something that we don't really address well. And as this document develops, as our conversations develop over time, I think it's an important factor to discuss and include in this conversation reproductive rights, and to be able to ensure that we, you know, I think this, the stats show that the, and I'm speaking as somebody with four children, that actually the most impact you can have for carbon emissions on the planet is actually having a child, as opposed to neutralizing all your carbon emissions. So that's something we don't talk about much, but I would like to see more involved in our conversations moving forward. And, but this document is amazing, this presentation is amazing, and just as for further discussions moving forward, that, that would be a good, good thing to include in the Public Health section. So, thank you. Anything else, Council?
Oh, shoot, I guess I'll say something real fast, if you'll allow me to. And it's just a shout-out to a quick rebuttal about the overpopulation comments. There's going to be a lot of people, I think, in this class who would argue, and I don't want to speak for anybody, but the real issue is the distribution of resources, and equal distribution of resources is far more of a problem than the privilege that we have of talking about overpopulation in the global north. But anyway.
Again, for future conversations.
Yeah, that's a longer debate. We'll have some other time.
Councilmember McCarthy.
They're both important.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for the great presentation, and yeah, looking forward to seeing those videos and everything else moving forward.
Thank you, everybody.
So. Thank you, Jenny.
Thank you all.
All right. With that, we are down to Agenda Item Number Nine. This is our Cinder Lake Landfill and Rethink Waste Plan Update.
I'm just going to check. Great. Great. All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Kaylee Wells, and I am the new Sustainability Specialist with the City of Flagstaff. Just a little bit about me, I'm originally from Flagstaff, so this is home for me. I originally started out my journey with the city as an Intercor Vista member with the Open Space Program, so very near and dear to my heart. I worked in a contracted role for a while, and then I started this position as the Sustainability Specialist back in September. So I'm really excited to present my first Rethink Waste Update to you all tonight. Here with me is Daniel Logan, who is the Solid Waste Collections Manager, and he'll be providing an update on the Cinder Lake Landfill, as well as the MRF. And then before we begin, just to look at your packet really quick, a slide did get added. It will be now slide number nine. So when you see that, if it doesn't quite match up, that's what happened. Great. And this is our agenda for this evening. So we're first going to talk about the Cinder Lake Landfill, specifically the life of the landfill. Then we're going to be talking about the Materials Recovery Facility, followed by our new Pay-as-you-throw pilot, which is really exciting. And then the Residential Food Scraps Drop Off Pilot, and then we'll have some time at the end for questions and comments and discussion. And without further ado, I will let Daniel speak on the landfill.
Awesome. Thank you, Kaylee. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, our Acting City Manager, and of course, our Acting City Clerk, if you're still on, thank you for the time. I got really excited when I knew that this year I'd be presenting in front of you guys. I've been the Solid Waste Collection Manager here in the City of Flagstaff going on four years, and always happy for opportunity to talk a little trash to City Council. So without further ado, let's do a really quick, a little overview real quick, just to let you know, 2,600 landfills in, operating currently in the United States, which makes our little piece of property pretty valuable. It's pretty exciting that we have our own landfill. We get to decide what's going on. It gives us a lot of decision-making power with what goes on with our recycle programs, how we collect, and what we do here with diversion and things like that in the City of Flagstaff. So yay, Flagstaff. Ours currently has 248 acres of operating area, so it's a little on the small side, not huge landfill, but it fits for the City of Flagstaff and our needs, and it works out really well. Housed in, at the landfill, we have our Hazardous Product Center, which I'm sure everybody's, I think you guys have already taken the tour this year, got to see that up close. Really neat things going on there. It's co-located at the landfill, and it's managed by our landfill staff, which makes it, again, a very, very, very good thing and a very helpful program that's going on. In fiscal year '21, we've diverted just over 206 tons of household hazardous waste, and that's diverted from our landfill going somewhere else, whether that's being reused, repurposed, or whatever else it goes to. So that's a really- which makes it, again, a very, very, very good thing and a very helpful program that's going on. In fiscal year 21, we've diverted just over 206 tons of household hazardous waste, and that's diverted from our landfill going somewhere else, whether that's being reused, repurposed, or whatever else it goes to. So that's a really, really great thing. This year, we're also forecasting between 90,000 and 100,000 pounds of e-waste diverted. That's also 100,000 pounds of, you know, electrical material, gold, you know, all the, that metal kind of electronic stuff not in our landfill, which is a really good thing as well. Okay. So a quick overview of the landfill site. I know the picture is a little hard to see, but I'll work my way around counterclockwise and go through each cell and kind of a really high level what's in, found in each cell. So the aerial photograph is, it's kind of hard to see. And if you need a bigger picture, you're more than welcome to come over to my office. I have a big wall size. I like to look at that thing all the time. So the northernmost point is Cell A, if you can see it up there. It does have trash in it currently. It is grandfathered into the old system, so there's no liner, no real new technology there. It is not packed out. It's not at capacity. We're not currently working that area or utilizing that area right now. It's kind of our back pocket. So when things happen like the flooding, fire, we need a quick area to throw a lot of stuff in there. That's what we kind of have that in the background for. There were some people that were thinking ahead on this and like, hey, you know what? We kind of set this aside a little bit. We have an emergency contingency. So then working clockwise down, you'll see Cell B, which is our current working area. That's the current operational area. South of that is Cell C. Right now, Cell C has scrap metal, it has green waste. There's also wood waste in there and there's a concrete kind of stockpile. That's where we've been staging all those kind of different types of materials. Further down south is Cell D. That's the current excavation. I don't know if you guys can see that. It's all the way down to the south there, that little triangle-looking thing. That's where we're actually excavating right now and opening it up and then putting in a new liner in. That's what we'll be looking at probably three to four years' time period. After we run out at Cell C, we'll be moving to Cell D. I'm sorry, Cell B, we'll be moving to Cell D. To the east, all the way up there, the big piece right there is Cell E. And we're currently utilizing soil from Cell E right now for cover. Not daily cover, but when we need the material to close out and build a bench to move to the next little area, we'll take some material from there. So as not to have to buy material and bring it in, kind of a cost savings there. Quick life of the landfill, as you see up there, based on industry standard, which is a 3% growth year over year. We're looking at the life of the land cell, life of the landfill to be out till 2063. And that, again, is based on an industry standard at 3%. We're actually not seeing 3%, so a little bit closer to the actuality of what we're utilizing it at right now is based on a 1% growth. And we calculate that and we say that's pretty close to actually what we're doing. So we're calculating the landfill life out to 2072. Okay? So the grandfather areas, Sequence A through C, are unlined. And the only reason that that's important is because when we get into Cell D, that one will be lined. What we're going to see out of that is a leachate and we're also going to see some gas capture out of that, too. So it's going to make it a lot more efficient. Cool. One of the really neat things that somebody way smarter than me came up with a couple of years back was the GeoSynthetic Cover, which is a really fancy name for putting a tarp down instead of dirt, right? It saved us a lot of airspace and it actually added five years to the lifespan of the landfill. So pretty exciting stuff. We are also looking at the new cell. Once we get into Pass D, Excavate D, Open Up D, we're looking at technologies that are probably going to increase over the next five, 10, seven years, whatever, however long it takes to get there. So once we actually get into excavating Cell E, our hope, our thinking is that the technology is going to actually improve and allow us to have more slope stabilization, which is actually going to allow us to grow, go deeper than what we can currently do now for landfill, which is going to extend the landfill even longer. So as my supervisor likes to remind me, that landfill is going to probably outlive me. So this is a good thing. And this is what we've been working toward.
Yep, Councilmember Brasslin?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to sit here with this tarp for a second. I assume this isn't a non-biodegradable plastic. And whatever the answer to that is, can you just explain a little bit more about, can you go deeper into this for us?
Of what it is? And yeah, sure. If I'm not mistaken, it's more of a, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, because I've only seen it up close a couple of times. I didn't really get into the material that it was made of. But it is a canvas. It does have a coating on it to keep it, kind of the water from mixing through and coming through. So it does have a plastic coating on it. It's not built to lay down and then pack soil over it. So there's a requirement when it comes to landfill that each day it needs to be closed out. So what was happening previous to this tarp was that we would actually take material like the SCA, old paper mill material, some green waste. We'd mix that together with some soil and then we'd have to close out the landfill every day. We had to cover the trash, right? So that the birds aren't picking at it, animals aren't going through it. So in order to save that material that we were putting down and gain that airspace that we were now packing all that material into, we simply lay down a tarp. We cover it each night with the tarp. In the morning, they come and they roll it up and then we start packing again. So it was a super awesome idea. And you can blame Todd if it doesn't work out, so. But no, it's super great. Like I said, just a simple little project like that added five years to landfill, easily. Did that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome, you bet. Where was I? So Cell B and, Cell B calculated at the industry standard of a 3% growth. We're looking at an estimated three years. That's about the time we're going to be looking at opening up Cell D. So we have about two to three years before we open up Cell D. So A and C, approximately six years, again, based on that 3%, which we're actually seeing much less than that 3%, but that's industry standard, so that's what we're calculating off of. Did I jump ahead? Nope, I think we're okay. Okay. We'll get into... Nope, talked about that, sorry, lost my place with your question. Okay, so as we know, the MRF transition, the contract with Thornton is up in 2023. It's got a little, some people kind of confused, some people not really sure where to be. We don't know what to do. For me, it's exciting. We're getting out of this contract that we were locked into for years, so we didn't have a lot of flexibility in our material or recyclable program. This is going to allow us to make a couple more decisions, maybe even take charge of that program. If we can't get it back online, it's at least going to help us be moving in the right direction. So I'm excited about it. Currently, let's see, we're looking for viable, viable different directions on what to do. We're looking for consultants. We've been talking to a couple consultants. We put out the feelers to see if we can get a couple consulting companies involved and see if we can gain some interest on helping us go in a direction, right? So some of the things that they're looking for or looking at, or some of the things that we're looking at, is to evaluate the best course of action for our recycle program. What this looks like is exploring possible sorting in materials, materials here locally. What can we take out of that stream? What's valuable? What can we use? Maybe that's viable, maybe it's not. This consulting company will help us, you know, kind of tell us that or help us point in the right direction, I'm hoping. Designing the right facility to meet the city needs as we grow, whether that's going to be a transfer station, whether that's a material sorting facility of our own. We don't know yet. It's a little bit too early to tell if it's going to be contracted out to have somebody run it, but we kind of know that that almost doesn't work right now. You know, the facility is a little bit older. It's kind of outdated. The technology isn't there. We don't have a huge volume of recyclables going through there. So we may or may not, it might be a better option for us to throw it in with somebody else and turn it into a transfer station and take it down to Phoenix, where they have a much larger facility, much more updated facility. Maybe we can pull more out of there. And making plans for the transition to possibly, like I said, a transfer station. That is a very viable option that we're going to be looking at with the consultants. Okay? And I think pending any questions, I think I have run out of slides. And I will hand it back to my very capable partner, Kaylee.
Thank you, Daniel. So next, we'll be discussing the Rethink Waste Plan and two strategies that we're using to be able to reduce waste in our community. And those two strategies are the Pay as You Throw pilot program as well as the Free Residential Compost Drop Off program as well. So to give you some background information about the Rethink Waste Plan, according to the EPA, roughly 42% of U.S. emissions are associated with the provision of materials and goods. So like consumption. Taking action to reduce the impact of Flagstaff's material consumption will play a key role in the, in meeting the city's climate action goals. So the Climate Neutrality Plan. In an effort to better prepare for changes in the waste and recycling landscape as well as effectively reduce the impact of the community's waste and material consumption, the city staff developed the Rethink Waste Plan to guide future efforts. So some background information on that. In the past, much of cities focused, have been focused on expanding access to and participation in recycling services. While these efforts will continue, a sole focus on material recovery will not allow the municipal organization and community to most effectively reduce their impact. So we can't just rely on recycling alone to minimize our impacts. Through the lens of materials management, the Rethink Waste Plan has increased focus on eliminating waste at its source and reducing the impacts of materials across the lifecycle. The plan is laid out into three phases. Right now, we are shifting into Phase Two, which will allow us to focus on creating a long-term strategic plan for achieving our waste goals in our community. So as I said before, we'll be first talking about the Pay as You Throw pilot. And we call it Trash Less Save More in Ponderosa Trails. So it's a little bit of a nicer name than volumetric pricing. So how does volumetric pricing work? So traditionally, you would just pay your flat fee for your trash can. It's, let's say, like 22.03 a month, something like that. And then you would just have the same trash cart every single month, depending, you know, doesn't matter if you produce one bag of waste or 10 bags of waste, as long as it fits in the trash cart. So Pay as You Throw uses volumetric pricing that says, hey, if you're trashing less, then you should be spending less on your trash bill. And before and now, we didn't have an option for folks who are producing less waste. And so if you look at the image on the right, you can see the 96 gallon, which is on the right side. And that's what all of us have unless you're living in Ponderosa Trails. And then through the pilot program, we're offering two other sizes. So the 64 gallon, which is two-thirds the size of a regular trash cart. And then we're also offering the 48 gallon, which is like this very cute little trash cart that goes in front of your house. So it just works like you would utilities. You pay for as much as you need. So you're paying for as much space in your trash cart as you need. This gives you a better understanding of what that rebate program looks like. So the pilot program launched back in August of 2021 and since then, 200 households have signed up to participate. The really great thing about this program is you don't need to just sign up at the beginning. You can sign up throughout the program. So you can just receive a partial rebate versus like a full rebate if you decide to participate later. You can see here, if you have that full-size 96 gallon, you're not receiving a rebate. That's like your regular trash cart size. If you're getting a 64 gallon, you're saving $2.21 a month. And then if you have that small trash cart, the 48 gallon, you're saving $4.19 a month. And the folks will see this at the end of the six-month pilot in their city services bill. So if you participate, then you'll have the six months worth of rebate. This is Albert. He's our sustainability squirrel. He learns with us. And so just like anything else, he is also learning how to recycle properly. So in order to roll out this program, we had used different outreach methods. So it was a little bit trickier because we couldn't use like our typical newsletters and social media outreach because we were specifically targeting Ponderosa Trails. So we use postcards, door hangers. We reached out through the Home Owners Association and sent out like mass emails through them. And then folks had the ability to sign up using either the website, an email address, or over the phone. So we're trying to reach everyone, not just people who are using the internet. So I'm actually going to show you, this is one of the postcards that we sent out to everyone on the right here that explains the program. Let's say that you got this in your mail and you're all ready to go. You're like, I want that smaller trash cart. So I'm going to show you what the website looks like once you sign up. So it's really, really simple. It's through GIS. It's through the city website. We wanted to make it accessible as possible. We had like some strong contrast of like the blue and white. So if you have like a screen reader, it can read it for you. It's really great. So it's, once again, very simple. We're talking about you're participating in a six-month pilot program and you're receiving a rebate on your city services bill. There's only two tabs at the top, so we want to make it really easy for folks to sign up. And it just basically provides the same information that I shared with you earlier about the different trash-sized carts and how much they're going to save. And then you click on Register and it has this really great Google form. And the backside of this is an Excel. And so I can just check regularly to see if people would like to participate in the program. As well as we're doing widespread recycling education. So this, these are examples of posts on our social media, so like Facebook and Instagram. And these are available to everyone. So once again, that really simple messaging about recycling, like what about this beverage cart? And so like your orange juice container is not recyclable, unfortunately. And so it describes whatever the item is and says, is it recyclable or not recyclable? And then underneath, we give an alternative because like recycling can kind of be scary. You're like, what are the rules? I'm not sure. So underneath, it's like buy fruits and vegetables in bulk without packaging. So that's our like awesome alternative versus the plastic clamshell. So here are some more details about the pilot program. So once you have a smaller-sized trash cart, where does the trash go? So maybe it ends up in somebody's recycling bin or maybe it ends up in bulky trash pickups. So we're trying to monitor and see where that trash goes. Or like, maybe they're not producing at all and that would be ideal. So in order to monitor kind of where the flow of waste is going, we're doing recycling bin checks in Ponderosa Trails and we visited each household three times, so like three weeks in a row. And you check their bin and you say, hey, like I found this and this and this that's not recyclable. And you leave them like a little oops tags. It's like, hey, next time, would you mind like taking this out of your recycling? And it's not a fine or a fee. It's just like a kind reminder that like, don't put your clamshell in here, something like that. So we're doing that type of education and we collect data about what we're seeing in the contamination as well. Like I've learned a lot about bubble packaging and a lot of people think it's recyclable and it's not. So we're learning a lot. We're also monitoring...
We got a note in our recycling bin.
Oops, sorry.
We got a note in our recycling bin.
A note in your recycling bin?
My wife was devastated. She was super offended.
Happy to talk of there. And then we're monitoring recycling contamination at the Materials Recovery Facility. So we're actually going to the MRF and we're conducting recycling audits. So it's like more of, you're like knee-deep in recycling and you're like trying to figure out what things are being thrown away. So monitoring it two different ways. We're also looking at bulky trash participation. So like, is it significantly increasing? Like when you go to Ponderosa Trails, are the piles getting bigger? And is it like more household waste versus like, you know, construction? I don't want to say construction waste, but like, you know, your yard waste or something like that. And then we're also looking at recycling tonnage and trash tonnage. So we just want to know where everything goes when it's not going in your trash can and hopefully it's just not being produced at all. The next steps for this pilot program are to evaluate the... The next steps for this pilot program are to evaluate the program impacts. So what are the impacts in the community? Like, how did people react to it? What can we change? Making necessary service changes. So do we have the infrastructure on the backside to be able to handle this? Like, you know, different-sized trash carts, just having like our structure in the back figured out. Development, develop a plan for community-wide implementation. So we picked Ponderosa Trails because it has an HOA and because it has very specific boundaries, so you can see where the streets are, and you know that this is Ponderosa Trails. But how does it work when you are, let's say, rolling it out to everyone? Not everyone is like Ponderosa Trails. Communities are different. They have different values, they have different needs. So how do we address those needs of different communities? And then developing educational materials based on the recycling bin checks. So I get to go into GIS and see all the things that people are bad at recycling and try to figure out a better way of getting that information to them about their, you know, their orange juice container. Great. And this was Morgan O'Connor, who is a resident of Ponderosa Trails, said, this tag on my recycled bin made my day. And he got a looking-good tag, so I could not find anything in there that couldn't be recycled. So I wish somebody would come to my trash can and do that. That'd be great. But yeah.
Apparently Councilman Brassland did not get that letter.
Yeah. Great. So now we are going to transition to talk about the Residential Foods Scraps Drop-Off Pilot. Let's get this going. Great. Okay, so this is another way of diverting waste. So we talked about like Pay as You Throw, we're trying to like, like reduce our waste entirely and get like these smaller trash cans. So this is another way of thinking about waste. So a lot of the items that go in our trash can is food waste, right? And so we also want to have a place for this food waste and other items to go that is not the landfill. So we want to expand the life of the landfill and have more space there. So thinking about how all of this is connected. So with this program, we started out in the market season. So we started out at the Flagstaff Community Market, and then we also were at the Market of Dreams, and we had staff booths there. So folks could come and bring their compostable items to us at these booths during the market season. And then, once the market was finished for the year in October, we offered self-service drop-off stations. So there's nobody there like talking with you about it, but we also had like an educational component, so folks could still drop off their compost. The image on the right is a community member who attended one of our garden workshops in the summer, and she's very excited about her free compost pail that she got for her counter. Very happy about that. So as I mentioned before, residents are provided with free compostable drop-off stations throughout Flagstaff. We work with contractors, which I'll discuss later, who pick up the material from the drop-off sites and then deliver it to local farms to be turned into compost. And then it goes back to our local food system. So you can see that it's not wasted. On the right, you can see this is compost from the pilot program at the Forestale Farm. So here are our community partners that we are working with to pick up the compostable items. So it's Compost Crowd, and if you want to learn more about it, you can always click on the link later and learn all about their organizations. And then Corbin Compost. And then our compostable materials are going to Forestale Farm and Refugee Gardens. So, as I said before, the pilot program started in July of 2021. We opened up two staff booths. And at that time, we were offering the free countertop compost pail. So we really want to address the accessibility of composting, so it can be really intimidating when you're like, okay, I have all these food scraps, but where do I put them? So we brought pails to folks like at these booths, and we said, hey, use these and come back and like come back to our booth repeatedly and, you know, keep using our composting service. At the end of the market season, the staff booths were closed, and then the two other booths were established, the self-service drop-off stations. Pretty self-explanatory. Great. So yep, our partnership, here's a staff booth at the Flagstaff like community market. It was really wonderful because when somebody brings you their compostable items, you can have a conversation with them. You can like open up their compost pail and be like, are there any items in here that like are not compostable? In total, two-hundred-and-seventy-three participants, drop-offed one-thousand-seven-hundred-and-seventy pounds of material. So we're talking about keeping that material out of the landfill, and we're using it for something important. We have planned to start the staff booths again in May 2022. We're hoping to use the same locations as before, but we're not sure yet. We've had initial conversations with Corbin Compost and Compost Crowd, and we just need to make sure that they're on board for next market season to be able to do these staff And then this is the self-serve compost drop-off station at Hal Jensen. So it's really important to us to have multiple locations, not just at the one downtown. Ideally, we would have many more compost drop-off stations so that anyone could like walk or bike with their compost to like their local drop-off station. So you can see here, this is Hal Jensen, and those are the bins on the right. The way that this works is you can bring your compostables to either the Flagstaff CSA and local market, which is downtown, or you can bring your compostable items to Hal Jensen. And you have your compost pail or whatever, you bring it in, and then you come to these bins. And so the way that you're able to access these bins is you use the QR code on the wall. So you can see in the photo there, you scan it with your phone, and it has like a quiz that says like, you know, which one of these items is compostable and which ones are not, so that folks are not just putting random items in there in theory. It also asks questions about like, where are they from? And would they be likely to use like a compost drop-off service if it was provided by the city? And then at the end of the quiz or the survey, it gives you the code. So then you can just like unlock it and take off the lock and then put your stuff in there. For folks who don't have phones, we also have paper versions inside of these locations as well, so you can have a conversation with the person who works there. You can talk about what you can and can't compost, and then they still give you the code. So we didn't want that to be a barrier. In the last three weeks, seventy participants completed a survey with us, so we're assuming at least like seventy new people use this survey. And this is, I mean, I even checked this morning, and there were like six more people in there. So it's like an incredibly popular service that we're providing the city, especially during Halloween. We had a lot of pumpkins, and a lot of people want to know where their pumpkins go at the end of the season. And then similarly, so just to remind you, at the, in the market season, we had the booths, and those were staffed. And then once the market season was done, we have the self-serve compost drop-off stations. And then we'll return back to the booths once the market season starts again. And just like the Is This Recyclable campaign, we have a Is This Compostable campaign. And so we ran the Is This Recyclable campaign for nine weeks on social media, and then we're hoping to do another nine weeks with Is This Compostable? And we want the messaging to look similar. You can see in the recycling one, it's blue, like the containers, the bins are blue. And then green, you know, for our green like compostable containers in the future, so recycling compost. Just like the recycling post, it has like coffee grounds are high in nitrogen and considered a green material. Paper filters are carbon-rich or quote-unquote brown material, things we don't even think about, green versus brown material. And then it also gives a tip. So we're trying to make composting as easy as possible for people. And then it's important to note that this is, you know, composting is different in different places. Certain places will accept the green plastic like compostable bags, and like we won't. So it's important to like learn based upon where you're sent, taking your compost, it has different needs. And that's all that we have. If you have any questions, comments, or want to talk about anything, we're here for you.
Thank you, Kaylee. And, and Daniel for the presentation. Good first presentation to council, thumbs up.
Thanks.
And Daniel, definitely appreciate you coming to talk trash to council.
Thank you.
But with that, I'll turn it over, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you both. That was a great presentation. I have a couple of questions. The smallest can size, is that the size of glass recycling? If you have glass recycling, you know, the little bin?
Correct. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And so moving to the, the transfer station model, will we be able to recycle more materials?
It's a little early to tell, but the short answer would be yes. So I don't want to get into or tip our hand one way or the other, because that's what a consultant is going to help us with. But I, but I believe yes. I believe we're actually going to divert more. We'll, we'll see the tonnage go up. That's my belief, but that's just my belief, not based on facts just quite yet. But I believe yes.
And I, I know that staff must have done some kind of carbon comparison of having a MRF here in town versus being a transfer station and taking it to Phoenix. Is that, am I correct in that?
Not yet. Still too early. We-
Todd Hanson, Solidways Fleet Director. Yeah, it, the material is going down there right now anyway. So that's where it, everything, it gets shipped out of town right now anyway, so it really doesn't increase the carbon footprint at all. In fact, it'll reduce the carbon footprint because we're operating a MRF. So all that electricity, all that stuff to operate the MRF, won't happen. Maybe minimally, if we decide to scrape cardboard off and keep it local, or some other material that we find that somebody locally can use it, maybe that, but minimal. So it's, it'll be a carbon reduction overall.
Thank you. And, and, and if I understand correctly, nothing is sorted here locally, right? It would just be taken down south, and then that's where-
We want the consultants to dig in a little deeper on that, because on the surface, yeah, you, you just ship every hundred percent out. But you could potentially have a small operation, like I said, to scrape cardboard off, if we can bail that and ship it locally. Or if there's another material that a local manufacturer, something like that in the future wants to do, we might be able to do that. But that's something that consultants are going to do, do a little deep, deeper dive into the transfer station.
Thank you. And if you said this, I didn't catch it. When are you expecting to have the consultant working on this?
The RFP is with procurement right now, so that should be released shortly. So I'm hoping, I'd like to get it started by the end of the year, but it might be a little close, maybe very beginning of next year.
And then when the consultant is finished, you'll come back and give us another presentation and talk more trash?
Yes, ma'am.
Always do.
Great, thank you.
You, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Schumacher?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Kaylee, and Daniel, Todd, and Nicole. Daniel, you talk a lot of trash, but talk is cheap. Just teasing. Appreciate you all being here tonight. Good presentation. Excited to learn about the efforts that you are taking. Not much to share in terms of comments or critiques or thoughts, just a couple of quick comments, though. I think outreach is, and education is so very needed, right? And, and your outreach campaigns, I, I think are really good. I'll be honest, I haven't seen them. For some reason, they haven't crossed my feeds, but that doesn't mean that they're not out there. And, and so I appreciate that. And I just see so much value in that, because I think there is a lot of confusion about what is recyclable, what is compostable. And half the battle, maybe more, even more than half the battle, is this education, right? So I want to empower you to further educate and also maybe integrate videos from time to time. Doesn't need to be anything special, and those are kind of special production, just a phone, one minute long, saying, hey, this week we want to highlight this, you know, and, and it almost have different themes, and just do an update. And you'll see some of those videos reach thousands, some will reach hundreds. But I think that could go a long way. I think people respond at times differently to videos than graphics, and, and it might just be a good tool to utilize in, in partnership with what you're already doing. Also, I was going to add that on our flyers, campaigns, and even if there's any kind of like trash can stickers, the integration of QR codes, I think I saw some in, in some of the outreach materials. But I think for the campaigns that we talked about, I didn't see any QRs, at least in, in what was presented. But I think that folks will likely, like, once you caught their attention, might want to scan something, depending on where they're seeing that, that outreach, and just go to a website that lists it all, just to kind of get that quick link. But yeah, go ahead.
We actually have a really fabulous website. It's called Recycle by City, if you don't mind, I can pull it up, that like has all this information about recycling.
Yeah, I'd love to see it. And those were my comments. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. I'll go real quick while you pull that up. Thank you for the presentation. And I just had a question for the Pay as You Throw Pilot. Which size can was the most popular for those that signed up?
So on, it seems pretty even. I think that people have, they kind of like wish, like, well, they're like, I'm going to do the forty-eight, and then they have to like contact you and be like, actually, I'd like the middle size. But it's been pretty even, like, it really just depends on what your family's needs are. But I'd be interested to see what, you know, what would be most popular once it's implemented citywide versus just Ponderosa Trails.
That's exciting. Thank you. And as we move forward, I would be excited to see this citywide, and kind of piggybacking on what Adam said, that, you know, different forms of outreach, depending on which neighborhood we're going to, multilingual publications. I just, I think this is an exciting time for Flagstaff, and thank you for your innovation with it.
Sure, thank you. And just to add one little tidbit of information on the Page You Throw, and why we're so excited, other municipalities that have tried this have actually seen an increase of twenty to forty percent in the recycle volume, and that's, of course, diversion and everything else. Of course, that's with education real big and enforcement, going out there and doing what Kaylee's been doing, beating the streets, checking in those cans, doing the legwork. It's, it's paying off, and hopefully we'll, we'll see that, and hopefully Flagstaff will migrate that way. Hopefully, that's the future for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember McCarthy?
Hi. As I read the packet, one thing that occurs to me, that it would probably be a good idea to change our city codes to require that all residential units, and I'm thinking primarily of apartments and condominiums or whatever, that they provide for recycling and trash. In other words, if they have, if it's a three-story building and they have chutes for trash, they should have chutes for recycling. If people have to take their trash out to a dumpster in the parking lot, there should be provisions for a recycling dumpster as well as a trash dumpster. And then I have a question.
Sure.
What should we do with all those pine needles that we have copious amounts of? What's the best place to, do those go to the landfill, or?
They do currently go to the landfill. There is some grinding of them, but they're pine needles. They almost right, go right through the grinder. We do use them for, for cover. We do try to pack them in, which of course, they don't pack so well. I'm still working on that one, sir. Don't have an answer yet. I don't have the solution yet, but-
All right, thank you.
You bet.
Councilmember McCarthy, Todd Hanson. I might be able to help you out with the, the additional requiring recycling containers. There's a, Arizona's kind of the ban, the ban or, you know, state, they don't allow you to require recycled containers or recycling at all.
So do you think it'd be a good idea to get a new legislature?
Yes. Well, it's just like you can't ban the grocery bags, you can't charge for auxiliary containers, you can't, so that's, that's where we're stuck. So it's, you have to encourage and educate, you can't demand that they do it.
Well, I knew that we couldn't have plastic bag bans.
Right.
But now you're telling me that we can't even require chutes for recycling or whatever. That's-
Every time through the, through the IDS program where we review all these plans, every time we've suggested it, though, that it would make them easier to get approved, they put them in.
Well, I encourage staff to do whatever we can to encourage people, and I'm sure you agree with me on this one.
Yes.
Thank you.
Because there are other cities who do- Because there are other cities who do have those ordinance in place and their diversion is much higher than ours.
Thank you. I have a, yeah, I was wondering, are we, because I've seen the Recycle by City, this was helpful for me a while ago. But is there a way we can put this on our recycle bins? A QR code that immediately takes you to a Recycle by City? Because I think that would be a great way to improve our recycling habits and the sorting thing if we have QR codes directly on our barrels or bins, yeah.
I, I don't think that's impossible, sir. Give me a little bit to think about that on how we would do it. Because as you know, trash can recycle lids come off, attaching it to lid, to the body. Pretty expensive if we're replacing those, but let me, give me a little bit of time on that.
Well, even if it's a sticker, like a decal sticker-
A QR code with a sticker, yeah.
Yeah, just a sticker that you put on there with, that has the QR code. Maybe that might be able to help. Just, I don't know, just throwing spitball in here. The other question I had is with the program in Ponderosa Trails. I don't expect it's much, but what is the expected impact on our enterprise fund by giving these rebates? Like if we are expanding it to the citywide, it doesn't seem like it's going to amount to much, but I just, so I can get an idea for the financial impact for rebates.
Mayor Duzey, on this pilot program, it's very minimal. But this was an operational pilot, not a financial pilot. So if this were something that after we look at the data and the operational aspects of it, we find that it's successful and we want to roll this out citywide, we would have to do a rate study and figure out the actual rates that we want to charge for this.
Okay, well, yeah, it doesn't seem like with 200 people with four, you know, $14 to 25 in a six-month period.
This pilot's included about 1,000 residents and we only reduced the size between carts by 10%. So it wasn't huge, but we'll have to rethink that whole model if we're going to roll this out citywide.
Excellent. Well, yeah, if we're also, if we're thinking on this QR code thing on our bins and so forth-
I wrote that note as soon as Councilmember Schumacher brought it up.
Yeah.
Should be pretty simple to do.
That'd be cool. It would also help with composting too. I mean, you, we could have multiple links on there to help with the whole program. So it'd be cool to put in the technology here.
Should be very easy to do. It's just a matter of printing them and distributing them.
Awesome. Well, thank you, Councilmember McCarthy.
So when we put in smaller trash cans, does that result in less trash? Because it may be, you know, a lot of times people will put the big cart out on the street and it's only half full. So if, if they, they could put all of that in a small can, but that wouldn't make any difference on the amount of trash that's being taken to the landfill.
Right, so that's where, when Kaylee had that one slide up, up, up the pay as you throw, we're monitoring all the different metrics and tonnage. So we're seeing, because the fear was, we basically have unlimited garbage here because of the bulky program. So my fear was that people are going to sign up for the 48 and throw their excess in the bulk pile. That's why we're monitoring it. Because if that's the case, then it doesn't make sense to do volumetric pricing.
Thank you.
All right, I think that's about it. Really appreciate the work you're doing and making progress to, yeah, sustain our landfill and make sure we're recycling appropriately and composting.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, with that, we are down to agenda item 10, which is our general public participation. I don't see that we have anyone at this time, just confirming. All right, then we are down to agenda item 11, which is our info items two for mayor, council and city manager and future agenda item requests. I think I started this side last time, so Councilmember Schumacher.
Okay, so not much to report. I think just the big thing I want to highlight are a couple of things. Tomorrow evening from 5:30 to 6:30 PM, I'm hosting a live discussion on Facebook and YouTube about the history of bicycle planning in the city. And Martin Ince will be joining me as part of, one of, one of my panelists to talk about the AT&amp;P and future planning. But we have a really awesome board that consists of myself, Sam Mayer, and Martin, as I mentioned, Susan from the Bicycle Committee. And we're working on getting John, I forget his last name, but he's the one that basically put together the foots in the eighties. And so should be a really good discussion. Be sure to tune in. And other than that, let me just do a quick check. A meeting with President Cruz this week, which I'm looking forward to. And I think that's really all I have in terms of updates. I hope everybody's holidays were, were well and good and it's good to be back.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one thing, and that is that the Toys for Tots box has been placed in City Hall in the lobby. And so I encourage people, if you're coming to a council meeting or, or coming to pay a utility bill, to bring a new unwrapped toy to, to put in the box and then to be distributed among Northern Arizona children.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I don't have anything this evening, so pass the torch to McCarthy.
I'll just mention that tomorrow is the Metro Plan Monthly Executive Board Meeting, which is at 10 to noon tomorrow morning.
Sounds like a party. Councilmember Sweet?
I don't know how I'm going to top that. As a reminder, there's the Winter Wonderland and Tree Lighting this Saturday from 3 to 6. I hope to see my colleagues there. And that will be downtown in Heritage Square. And this Friday is First Friday Art Walk in downtown. Lots of artists and local businesses will be hopefully busy and stocked full of local holiday gifts. So please stop by the downtown for First Friday. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Do we have anything from our current city manager for this evening?
Nothing tonight, ma'am.
All right, I had to say it one more time. So thank you, everyone, meeting adjourned.